Okay, you should be good.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Northside Board of Trustees. Before calling this meeting to order, the board would like to take just a moment to briefly review some of the rules for conducting our meeting. Obviously, we are not meeting in person. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by the Attorney General to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. I will now ask Ms. McGee to call the role of trustees.
I'll begin with Dr. Harrell.
Present.
Ms. Freeman?
Present.
I'm sorry, Mr. Medina.
Present.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Chumlee.
Present.
Mr. Blunt.
Present.
And Mrs. Wade.
Present.
In accordance with those suspended rules mentioned before, we certify the following. Number one, notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number two, although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. Number three, we are meeting by use of a software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. Number four, as we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion or to address a specific agenda item will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If the speaker submitted written comments in advance, the superintendent will read the comments into record before or during the board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number five, all other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. Number six, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. The Order of Business for this meeting is set out in the agenda. One item that you may notice on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. This item includes items that are considered routine and/or are of a recurring nature. All the items listed under the Consent Agenda will be acted upon in one motion. The meeting will then be officially called to order. Please bow your heads as Trustee Blunt leads us in the invocation and pledges of allegiance.
First, the invocation. Almighty and merciful God, we ask your guidance and blessings on this board, students, parents, patrons, teachers, and administrators as we are assembled here this evening in the common pursuit of this great nation's wealth, our children. Amen. Now, we do the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 180.007, which requires a public hearing before any payment is made to an employee or a former employee that exceeds the contract amount owed to an employee. This item has been properly posted and an electronic sign-in sheet has been provided for the public to speak if they so desire. Mr. Barajas, will you please make your presentation?
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you, Trustee Harrell. This hearing is to cover information regarding the district seeking approval from the board later in the agenda to pay contracted employees premium pay. As we all know, back in March, there were stay-home, stay-safe orders issued by Bear County and City of San Antonio. Under Board Policy DEA Local, anti-resolutions passed both on March 18th and April 14th, the district instituted premium pay at 1.25 times for employees who were asked to come to work after the state orders were issued. We have the effective date of the premium pay from March 25th, the day that the stay-home orders were into effect, to May 1st, 2020. Again, this was only for hours' work while somebody was physically at a district location. This premium pay applied to all non-exempt employees. Exempt employees, a different category of employees. It was determined that any exempt employee at the Assistant Director level and below were going to be considered for premium pay. However, there was a slight issue regarding any employee who was exempt and also had a contract. Premium pay for non-exempt employees was paid and is continuing to be paid under the authority granted by the board resolutions. However, any premium pay for an exempt employee who has a contract, before it could be paid, look, Texas Local Government Code 180-007 required a hearing to be held, at which the board must state the following: the reason for the payment and the public purpose that the payment serves, the exact amount of the total payment, the source of the payment, and the terms of the distribution. It's my understanding that the information provided to Trustee Harrell has all this information, which she will cover later during the hearing. After the hearing is concluded, there is an item under Business and Finance that is seeking approval for the administration to make these premium payments to contracted employees in the exact amount of $4,214.57. And, Trustee Harrell, that concludes the presentation regarding the premium pay for contracted exempt employees as required under 180-007, point 007, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. There's a subsequent agenda item tonight for the board to consider, as he mentioned, and certain additional payments to be made to contractual district employees who were asked to report to duty from 11:59 PM on March 24th to 11:59 PM on May 1st, 2020, during the Bear County and City of San Antonio Stay-at-Home Work-Safe Orders. Prior to making any additional payments, the following information is being provided to the public in compliance with Government Code Section 180.007. Number one, the reason for payment. The Northside ISD Board of Trustees adopted resolutions on March 18th, 2020, and on April 14th, 2020, which provided for paying premium pay for certain exempt and non-exempt employees who are called on to work during an emergency closing. Number two, public purpose. Certain contract employees are required to report to duty at district facilities when the district is otherwise closed in accordance with national, state, county, and city orders related to COVID-19. While the district is closed to student attendance, the district is providing distance learning, continuing to feed students and their families, and implementing mandatory social distancing requirements, including 10-person limits on meetings. In implementing these changes to normal operations, some employees must work days, nights, and weekends in order to shift to distance learning, plan for and deploy staff, continue nutrition services, and provide skeleton crews to address various needs around the district. As a result, some employees are required to work on-site out of necessity, while many other employees are able to perform their work remotely. Number three, proposed payment and terms. In addition to providing premium pay for non-contract employees who were required to work on-site during this time, certain contract employees who are Assistant Directors and lower pay grades and who were required to work on-site will be paid 125% of their basic salary only for the hours they were required to work on-site at the district during this time period. This premium pay rate will be calculated by taking 125% of their annual salary, dividing it by the number of days in their work schedule, and then dividing that number by eight hours in a workday. The total dollar amount of these extra payments for these certain contract employees required to work on-site during this time of emergency closing from 11:59 PM on March 24th to 11:59 PM on May 1st, 2020 is $4,214.57. And the individual specific payments to each of these certain contract employees are available upon request. Number four, the source of proposed payment. The funds will be paid from the district's general fund and child nutrition fund accounts. Number five, terms for distribution. These payments will appear on the employee's June 26, 2020 paycheck if approved. Are there any speakers signed up to provide comments on this?
Harrell, I believe the answer is no. Leanne, will you confirm?
No, there are none on the public hearing form.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all who spoke and voiced this. Okay, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. So, we continue to focus on the top three priorities we identified when when the situation began, and that is, obviously, keeping our students, their families, and our staff safe by operating distantly, with the exception of our feeding program. Two, continuing to teach and learn distantly through our last day of class, which is actually next Thursday, June 4th. And then, three, feeding families who need that support. We crossed the 1 million meal mark served out of our cafeterias a couple of weeks ago. In addition, we continue to work with the San Antonio Food Bank to find creative ways to push more food resources into our community. And I'm happy to say that that will continue throughout the summer as well. We continue to look at summer offerings based on public health and state agency guidance. Most NISD students and staff will take June off, but we hope to come back with rich offerings in person or by distance learning, or perhaps both, in July. We believe it's really important to be thinking about reintegrating back into our schools at some point. We are standing up some programs for our youngest learners in June that can be done at home. And with a little assistance from Leanne, I'll ask her to share a page that Patty Sanchez and her staff created. So, for our pre-K K1, 2 students, we've produced a daily calendar of things that can be done at home specific to this age group of young people. One of the things you'll notice on the Saturdays is that, again, thanks to Patty and her hard work, we've worked out a partnership with a local TV station for our folks to present lessons for families that are appropriate by this range of grades. And that will continue through the summer as well. So, just wanted to give you a sense of some things that we're going to try to offer to families even in June before we perhaps try to come back to schools to some degree in July. So, thanks, Leanne. Thanks for that very much. Last week, we announced our plans for graduations to be held at our respective high school campuses. I really want to thank our high school principals for their hard work to make this happen for our graduates. We were continuing to work on a virtual ceremony that will be available to all graduates. I also want to take a minute to thank Northside students, parents, and staff for working together to facilitate the really massive pivot that we've made in how we teach and learn in the last 10 weeks. And while it's not yet clear what school will look like in August, we will certainly spend the summer working on plans to keep teaching and learning at the forefront, but do it in a way that's safe for our students and for our staff. Dr. Harrell, that concludes superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a question from Ms. Chumlee.
Hi, Carol. I'm sorry, I just, whoever whoever is handling the presentation piece that's keeping it on the screen, if they can just make sure and open, like when a presentation's there, open it up and kind of move the pages, that'd be great. I have it on my iPad too, but it's easier having it here. When I tried to do it, I lost myself. So, anyway. And then, do you want me to do citizens' board reports now, or?
Sure. I had one real quick question of Dr. Woods, just real quick.
No, that's right. I'll come back.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Woods, where can families access that calendar and the information? Is it at the district website, or will it be on all schools' websites, elementary school websites?
We're still working to finalize, Dr. Harrell, but by the end of this week, we anticipate that that will be going from teachers to families directly, and it will also be available on the summer learning website as late as the first of next week.
Okay, thank you. And please thank staff for us. All right, so let's go ahead to board members' report. Ms. Chumlee.
Thank you. I just, Dr. Woods, thank you for all of the work that you and your staff are doing. I know it's been amazing, and I know we keep telling you to please take some time off and get some rest, but I'm going to keep saying that until you do it. But we really appreciate everything you and your staff, Ray and Janice and Renee, all of you, what you have been doing. And I just wanted to just do a shout-out to our parents and family and community. It was really neat because we had parades, graduation parades, through my subdivision over the weekend. And it was really neat how just, I mean, I think there were random people that kind of just got in line and were honking their horn and waving to the kids, but it was just really nice. And I think that, you know, our community and our parents and families have really tried to step up for our seniors. I'm just really starting to miss graduations greatly, and I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's trying to work outside the box to make it a special time for those kids that have lost that event from their high school years. And that's it. Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you very much. Any other trustees? Ms. Freeman? Ms. Freeman?
She's muted. Okay, working on it. Okay, there we go. Yes, just to add. So, I've enjoyed watching all of the the Facebook posts and the Twitter feeds on the parades. We also had a parade and honored our seniors in our neighborhood over the weekend and escorted by the fire truck and the police department. And everybody's honking horns and sirens and people waving. It was a nice tribute to our seniors. I also appreciated the pictures as the seniors got their cap and gowns from the schools. The schools have posted pictures as they have paraded and they were handed their cap and gown either through the, in the car or wherever they needed to pick them up. And the teachers had also lined up. Some of the staff had lined up with posters. And it might have been some parents as well, but that was really nice for our seniors. Yes, you know, I'm hoping next year we will have back-to-in-person graduations. And I swear I won't complain about the 12 or whatever graduations anymore. That was, it's always a marathon, but it's always a lot of fun. So, congratulations to all of our seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Blunt?
Yeah, one of the things that Dr. Harrell and Dr. Woods and I got to see, and I know they see a lot of it anyway, but Art Elementary had invited us to their art night. And it was just really, really great to see how creative and how they maintain the things that we want our students to be able to learn. They took a very famous art picture and had the families literally work together, taking hours around the house to recreate it. And that was just, it was great. It was really good and enjoyable, so we definitely liked being a part of that. The other thing I was going to let the board know is we're about done with the very first draft. By next week, we should have our first draft of the Bear County Schoolwork Coalition book. I should say, draft, draft copy of it. And I want to thank Karen's been very helpful with the data section that the Texas Higher Ed Coordinating Board and Region 20 have been very helpful with. Sandy at Northeast is doing the new section we added on COVID-19. So, we want to show what include in our book, something new we decided to add on all the different support that the districts are doing and to show how Public Ed really stepped it up. And we also have a Go Public session. I think I told you Hannah Garcia and now our executive director Lisa is now working on. And then, all the ISD had already completed their section, so it's about over 100 pages right now. So, we'll be adding it and getting some artwork and everything else done, but I think it's going to be really good, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and thanks for spearheading that. All right, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I just had a couple of little comments. One was actually a question for Dr. Woods. How do our high school graduates find out when they need to be going to have their pictures taken? Have they already been notified?
Ms. Reed, they're indicating by the end of this week whether their interest in that opportunity. And then, after we know what the demand is, next week, we'll notify families.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to sort of brag about was not about Northside, but my granddaughter is a teacher in the Klein School District over in Houston. And the school where she teaches first grade has just received last month a recognition, a national recognition as an outstanding elementary school. So, it's just kind of nice for me to know that somebody in my family has followed along kind of in my footsteps. Thank you. That's a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you. Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez, you're still muted. There you go.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Harrell. No, I just wanted to piggyback on the comments that Melissa said about, you know, the graduation. Brian, you know, it was an excellent job, and I'm glad we were able to provide some sort of a ceremony for our kids in these challenging times. So, thank you to the administration and for your guidance and everybody else for allowing this to happen. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Medina?
Just briefly, and to all those comments that were already made previously, I also agree with those as well. But distance learning has been a kind of a new experience, but also an enlightening experience, not only for, you know, our teachers, but also our students. You know, I've spoken to other parents, and a lot of the students have really taken charge of that. And there are so many compliments of how their teachers have really, you know, supported them, that they've done live Zoom meetings pretty frequently. And so, whenever students needed help, there's been really, really, you know, great response from teachers being there to support the students throughout these challenging times. As well as regarding our feeding program, our cafeteria workers, our Learning Tree staff, you know, they've done such a wonderful, wonderful job being there day in, day out to make sure our kids are being fed and having that ability to not worry about where their meals come from, but being available to make sure they're being provided that meal. Lastly, there's been some severe weather that has crossed our path recently. And so, we wanted to make sure our community is aware that we are there in our thoughts and for us to be aware. I think there's more storms to come in tomorrow and so forth, and that we're thinking of those that were affected by those storms recently. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. I think everyone's had an opportunity to share. I just wanted to also thank the trustees for taking the time to create messages of support and best wishes and hope and all kinds of wonderful sentiments for not just the graduates. Those were phenomenal. And I'm going to see if Barry and I can get together and email what everybody said or see clips of that. It'll just warm your heart. And also, the messages of gratitude to every single person. I think we covered every single wonderful person that is part of the Northside family without even intending to do a checklist or anything else. It just came from everybody's hearts, and the words will speak volumes and hopefully touch everybody like they did me. So, and thanks also to Barry and his staff for accommodating us and being so, and I guess I can say this, gentlemanly and supportive in that process. So, thanks again. And I just want to do one more shout-out to our HEB finalists, Dr. Jerry Woods, Dr. Raquel Cataldo, Priscilla Prether, and Deanna Upright. They made it all the way to state. So, and it was kind of a pep rally of sorts for educators everywhere. And I know they had their schools following them in the Zoom meeting and cheering. And then, we also had a lot of teachers participate in the Teachers Can. And that pep rally of sorts also brought a lot of celebration of the teaching and learning profession. So, hats off to everyone. With that, I think we'll move ahead to recognitions. Dr. Wood?
Yes, ma'am. So, as you know, this is the time of year that we typically recognize milestones. We hold ceremonies for employees with 10, 20, 30, and more years of service to our district, for our retirees, and for students receiving all sorts of honors and awards, and of course, graduation. To say that this isn't a typical year is a pretty significant understatement. But what has consisted, what has been consistent during these times is the consistency of our board and the steadfastness of their purpose of doing what's right for students and for staff. So, in keeping with what seems like this theme of doing untraditional events of late, we want to take this time to recognize three board members, albeit virtually, who have served the district in longevity, compassion, and purpose. First, and we admit fully, Mr. Blunt, that we should have done this a year ago, but better late than never, and thanks, I guess, the one bright light in our current situation. It is that we are recognizing Mr. Blunt for his 20 years of service, even though he is completing, as we speak, his 21st year of service. So, congratulations and thank you, Mr. Blunt, for everything you've done for our school district. You can see the plaque that we had created, and we've also got a service pin for each of the folks we're recognizing tonight. Next, with 25 years of service is Melissa Chumlee. Congratulations to Mrs. Chumlee for her longstanding service on our board. And there's the picture, the plaque from Mrs. Chumlee. And then, lastly, our longest-tenured trustee, Mrs. Katie Reed, with 30 years of service on the board concluding literally this month, 30 years of that service this month. We realize that all three of you have a lot more years as a volunteer to our school district through your time when your children were in school and in various school-related activities all along those years. We wanted to take time to recognize you and your milestone as a board member. As you've seen, we have a couple of small tokens of appreciation. They include the plaque and a service pin. And on a personal level, I just want to say thanks to all of you and certainly to these three folks who I've worked with for many, many years now as we continue to work together to go on what has become an interesting journey of late. But thanks to all of you, and congratulations on your service to our school district.
Thank you.
And I will take comments in just a minute, but the rest of the team of eight, to the ones who are aspiring to add longevity to the board because of such good mentoring and service, have a What a Trustee Award. So, each of you, I don't know, you can't see it. Can you see it? It is not showing up in the screen.
I think you're going to have to describe it.
Okay, it's those little table tents. Oh, there, the little table tent for 20 years for Bobby. 25, of course. Do you know how hard these are to get? You guys really deserve them. So, well, I should have left it alone, but you saw the table. There's 20, 25, and 30. You also get Rockstar Whataburger sunglasses because the future's so bright, you got to wear shades. And you get a Whataburger gift certificate and a Whataburger pop-up that goes on the back of your phone
or your iPad so that you can have virtual meetings just about anywhere. So anyway, on behalf of the rest of the trustees, we thank you so much. You are truly what a trustee in our mind, and we celebrate with you. Does anybody else have some words they'd like to share? Ms. Freeman.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for, for your continued service. I, I hope, it is our hope that you feel special as we recognize you this evening. And, you know, those of us who are on the board, sit on the board with you, we know that it's a big decision to run for a political office, and it requires family support. So thank you to your families as well for supporting you over all these years. You know, we know that stability and consistency on the board is extremely important for student and district success. And, and it provides such a foundation for the rich culture that we have in Northside. So thank you, thank you for your service, and we look forward to many more years with you.
Great words, Freeman. Mr. Lopez. Can you unmute? There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I just want to congratulate, congratulate everybody. And, and, and like you said, it was, you guys are mentors to, to us that have just gotten in. And, but, you know, I also look at the impact from a district perspective, not, well, not only from a district perspective, but from a, from a city perspective and a state perspective. Because, you know, so many of you, you know, Katie, you've been a TASB board president, you know, for the state and representing Northside at that level, you know, that's a tremendous honor. And you had done a great job on that. Bobby, you've done the same thing from, from a state level as well with, you know, with the Coalition of School Boards and Bear County, and plus with the Go Public and you being instrumental in all of that. And Melissa, you know, just your advocacy for everybody in encouragement and working with each and every one of us through these times has been inspirational too. So I thank all of you for this. So congratulations as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Medina.
So just briefly, I, I don't know how to piggyback on that. I mean, I think Free, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Lopez has really expressed, you know, similar feelings. But also the mentorship of being a trustee, having guidance and enlightenment from your words and actions speak louder than a word. I mean, you can't imagine, but you definitely all, you know, walk the talk and, you know, model that, you know, Good Samaritan, you know. And also, it's just the impact you have on children is second to none. I mean, ultimately, y'all, y'all do it, you know, you pour yourselves into this without any reservation. And, and y'all, you have all taken, you know, time and sacrifice, you know. And again, you, you've done it for a cause, you know, like no other, you know, for our children, for our future. And, you know, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Any other comments?
Okay, all right. I want to thank you all. That was very, very nice. Thank you. And unexpected and just, that's very nice. Thank you all. And, you know, when I started, I never thought I would be on the board 25 years, but there just always seemed to be something else. And I think the other thing is that I think Northside has a history of just having people that truly care about kids, and that's what it's about. And, and keeping that in the forefront when we make decisions. And what I really like is that we can agree to disagree and that we're still friends. You know, it's not, it's never personal. Anyway, thank you all very much. I'm very touched and appreciate it very much. Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, Ms. Reed, did you want to mention a few things?
I would make a comment or two maybe. It certainly is, as Melissa said, not anything I set out to do to be here all these many, many years. But I wasn't always involved in education. I was a teacher at one time, and it just seemed to be the right thing to do way back when, when some people came and asked me to do it and helped me get elected, mainly because at that time, we ran at large in the entire district of Northside, and you all can't realize how big a job that is. Thank heaven, we did go to single-member districts, and that's when Melissa came on board. So it's been a very big learning experience, and the school district has doubled in numbers of, more than doubled in numbers of students since I've been here. So the job has become much bigger and much more important than it even was back then, I, I think. But I wanted to mention one other thing about the time that I spent with the TASB board. I wasn't just representing Northside to TASB. That's what I did when I was a board member of TASB. But when I was the board president of TASB, I was representing Texas to the nation. And that was a huge undertaking, and I found myself coming and going. And my husband finally learned how to make, take care of himself without me around. So there are benefits for those kind of things happening. And it has been my very big pleasure to be a part of what goes on in Northside and to know that we are doing such a great job in Northside with our kids and our students and with our employees also. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Blunt.
Yeah, just real quick, I, I also want to pass on my thank you without a doubt. This is a surprise, but really, really appreciate it. I, I do want to say there's a couple of things I'll tell folks about what it's like to be on the Northside Board. It's just like coaching an All-Star team, where you got the very best of all time. Because between our, we work together as a board with the staff, the leadership we have, with the superintendent and others. It's, it's, this, this, to me, it's easy to do. The other thing I was gonna let everybody know is, you know, sometimes I'll be somewhere and somebody asks, come to use a server. You know, right now it's the 21 years, but I said, but I didn't nearly compare it to Melissa and Katie. And I said, that's really the real standard in a number of years. So we'll see how long everybody keeps going, but appreciate it again.
Thank you. And thank, thank you for bringing, all of you for bringing such honor to our district. I know wherever I go, you have already set the bar so high that compliments are, they're everywhere. And it's because of the, the service and the foundation that you've provided. But like everybody said, the incredible leadership and mentorship has been priceless. So yay to our rock stars. If, if there are such a thing, we'll, we'll invent that. But we are now gonna move on to citizens to be heard. Mr., Dr. Woods, do we have citizens to be heard?
I believe we do have one person signed up. Leanne, is that, is that Wanda Longoria? Is that correct?
It is.
Okay, if you can unmute her, please.
Okay, let me go ahead and read the rules for addressing the board very quickly. No, that's okay. We believe citizens to be heard is important and meaningful, and we will listen to what you have to say. We value your opinions, although we are restrained by law from taking any action. Please address your remarks to the board. Confine your remarks to an NISD policy or practice. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. At three minutes, Dr. Woods will ask that you wrap up your remarks. Do not make any personal attacks on any individuals, please. Thank you. Ms. Longoria.
Esteemed President, Dr. Woods and trustees, I'm Wanda Longoria, President of Northside AFT. Tonight, we'd like to thank you for considering the approval of the T test waiver that we requested in April. We'd also like to thank Mr. Ray Galindo for answering our questions regarding cleaning out guidelines and how educators could request more time if necessary, following current CDC guidelines. We appreciate all those NISD administrators who are working with educators to give them air conditioning, time, support, and assistance they need to completely pack up their rooms, take their personal belongings home, remove their personal furnishings, and to also get paperwork and other requirements completed between now and June 5th. Northside AFT would also like to thank Dr. Woods for his comments in a recent interview where he advocated for careful planning moving forward through the reopening of schools and possible summer school. We appreciate his concern with health and safety of all students, parents, employees, and the community, as well as his transparency with the community about all the unanswered questions still to be answered by TEA and local health agencies. We do have some questions that we hope will be addressed soon regarding the planned calendar and summer school. We've had educators tell us they've been asked if they'd like to teach or tutor, but they were not given many details. They expressed a willingness to participate, but they're concerned with what that looks like. They do not want to volunteer and then find out they're uncomfortable with the arrangements regarding health and safety. So more information soon would be greatly appreciated. Northside AFT will be sending you an email from the Coalition of San Antonio Reopening of Schools. It includes at least 14 community groups. We're a coalition of students, parents, community members, union educators, and nonprofit organizations from Bear County seeking to ensure that all decisions about safely reopening our schools center around the voices of students, their families, school workers, and the communities which they serve. We ask that decisions about reopening our schools include those who will be directly impacted, prioritizing student and worker safety above all else. Public schools and educators are essential to our society as demonstrated by the current COVID-19 crisis. We must ensure that plans to safely reopen these critical public spaces, the very hearts of our communities, are developed with and not for those who work and study there. We're hoping you agree with us and allow the Coalition to have discussions, submit suggestions, and be part of the community engagement to find the best ways to protect our students, parents, and communities should the district decide to open schools ahead of the vaccine. We're also asking for information regarding the planned calendar for the next school year, as well as employee compensation packages well prior to the new proposed deadline for teachers to submit resignations. We're aware TEA has given districts options for calendars and would hope to hear what NISD has selected as a plan for the 2021 school year. Educators should have all that information as soon as possible so they can make crucial decisions for their families. Thank you again for always listening, allowing us to ask questions, and for considering the voices of our community of NISD students, parents, educators, and district employees. And congratulations to Katie, Bobby, and Melissa, who jointly, cumulatively, together have served Northside students and community for 75 years. That's incredible. Congratulations.
That's the, thank you very, very much, Ms. Longoria. All right, moving along to item nine, Consent Agenda. There are 14 items on the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none is, do I have a motion? Ms. Freeman?
Yes, Dr. Harrell, I would move approval.
There is a second?
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Freeman did the motion, and Ms. Chumbly's second. All those in favor, I'll do roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumbly?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. All right, the ayes have it. The Consent Agenda has been approved. And so we will now move to curriculum and instruction. Dr. Jordan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Woods, Board of Trustees. Tonight, I'll be sharing three waivers that Northside is requesting your permission to submit. We talked about these waivers at length at our May 8th academics meeting. And these are waivers that every district in the state is required to do due to COVID.
Leanne, can I share my screen over yours? I'll try and see if it can, see if it comes up. So the first that I want to show you is the, let's see. Can you see this? This is the Miss School Day waiver. So this waiver, again, it's outlined in Education Code that students are to attend school a certain number of minutes. That's 75,600. So TEA has directed districts to submit this waiver that says if you didn't meet the 75,600 minutes, you do not need to make those up. So just for a little bit of background, when we submit the waivers, we either indicate, we indicate that we're closed, but we're either temporarily closed, we're closed and we're preparing to provide instruction, or we're closed and providing instruction. So you see the definitions there of what each of those means. So for Northside, we will be submitting that we were closed from March 16th through June 4th. So that's the Monday after spring break to the last day of school. From March 16th through the 20th, that's when we were closed, preparing. Teachers were setting up their Google Classroom. We did have online resources available for students and for parents. Teachers were reaching out to their students, but instruction did not officially start until that following Monday, which was March 23rd. So from March 23rd to June 4th, that will be closed instruction. This waiver can't be submitted until after school is out. So we wanted to get your approval to submit it on June 5th. So any questions about that one? You want me to keep going, Dr. Harrell, to the second one?
I, I think we'd be better off just doing action as, as each one comes up, if that's okay with the board.
Sure.
Dr. Harrell, I move to move approval.
Okay, Melissa Chumbly moved approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Medina had a second. It's been moved and seconded. All right, Ms. Reed. We will take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Reed. Let me see. Ms. Reed, can you hear me? You're muted. Okay, thumbs up. All right, Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumbly?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. The ayes have it. It's been approved. Next, CPR waiver. Dr. Jordan.
Yes, ma'am. So for this waiver, and this is one literally we got just a couple of weeks ago. Texas Education Code requires that students have the opportunity to take the CPR test or CPR licensure. We offer that through some required courses in health. But students can take it anytime between their ninth grade year and their 12th grade year. So chances are, our current seniors probably took CPR prior to spring break of their senior year. But just in case they did not, we're submitting this waiver that basically will outline that we, that if a student did not take or had the opportunity to be instructed in CPR, then they're waived from that requirement.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, is?
Carol, I just had one question. Is the CPR, this is?
Okay, so it is part of our normal, that, that, the health piece that our kids take, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I'm, just wasn't sure. And I thought that that was it. I remembered a long time ago. That hasn't changed much, has it?
It hasn't, no.
Carol, I move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Lopez seconded. All those in favor will do roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumbly?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. All right, the ayes have it. CPR waiver's been approved. We'll move to the Educator Principal Administrator Appraisal Waiver. Dr. Jordan.
Yes, thank you. So this is affectionately called the T test, T test waiver. Yes, thank you. So this is affectionately called the T-Test, T-Pass waiver. That's what Ms. Longoria was referring to. TEA, this is their official name, Educator Principal Administrator Appraisal Waiver. So as you know, appraisals are required for administrators. And so the process really begins at the beginning of the year through goal setting, through walkthroughs, through conferences, but it's a process that continues throughout the spring. So what this waiver will do is it will waive any aspects of the appraisal process that were not completed prior to the disruption due to COVID, or any that could not logically be completed. So we know teachers and people, teachers get on a cycle of their T-Test approval. So those who were up for it this year, it would be waived for them. One thing I did not mention, all three of these waivers, we had a virtual NEIC meeting last week on the 19th, and so we walked through all of these waivers with that board-appointed committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jordan. Are there any questions or discussion? All right, Ms. Chumley?
I just had a question, Janice. So my understanding is any of the evaluations that have been done prior to spring break, so prior to all of this happening, those stand, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But this is just if some couldn't be completed, you know, it means that they don't, yeah, you don't have to force it in this environment.
And what is the normal, so like, just, what is the normal timetable that our principals are, have to do the evaluations? Like, you know, is there, it has to be done by, you know, May 1 or April 20, or, you know, do we have a table, or is that, that they just have to be done, you know, before school's out? I'm just curious what that standard ETA is.
Well, typically, at each level, it looks a little different, but typically, especially for high schools, by the time they get into the month of May and so many things happening at the campus, they try to wrap it up before then. But in terms of elementary, Ray, are there any specific deadlines? I'm not sure of any.
No, that's the same. And generally speaking, if you have, for example, new teachers that need two of them, you'll do one in the spring, one in the fall. And typically, everyone tries to wrap it all up by the first part of May. Obviously, we didn't come back after spring break, so as Dr. Jordan mentioned, there were a number that if they hadn't done that last observation or walkthrough, and that's the reason for the waiver. But generally speaking, May 15 is the, or early May even, I should say, Ms. Chumley is the date that we typically try to wrap all that up.
I was just curious, because we have SLOs on our reviews that we have to do, you know, but we do want a quarter. So I was just curious about it. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, is there a motion?
Katie, I would move approval.
Okay, Katie has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Bobby seconded it. All right, we'll do roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. The ayes have it, and so the waiver's been approved. We will now move to item 11, Facilities and Operations. Galm Road Area High School. Mr. San Miguel?
Thank you, Dr. Harrell. This item before you is for the amendment, approval of a recommendation for approval of Amendment Number Four for Galm Road Area High School. Jorah's General Contractors was awarded the Construction Manager at Risk on September 25, 2018. This project consisted of several phases and subsequent bids, given the complexity and the project scope. This request is for the final amendment. The Amendment Number Four is for not to exceed $16,198,608 for the necessary work associated with the finishing packages. The total, this brings the total GMP to a number of 133,632,339. I must take point of privilege and pat Jorah's General Contractors on the back for working extra hard to try to get this number closer to our targeted amount. And so they worked very diligently to get us where we need to go. So this will complete the final GMP that now can be signed so that they can finalize the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. San Miguel. Are there any questions or discussion? Ms. Chumley?
I'm sorry, I didn't take my hand down.
Okay.
No, I'm good, but since you called, I'll ask. Lee, I just wanted to say thank you to you and all of our facility staff as well, because I know you all have been intricately involved and tried to get us closer to the budget. So thank you very much for all of y'all's work as well. And with that, I move approval.
Okay, so Ms. Chumley has moved for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lopez has a second. We'll do a roll call vote. For all those in favor, Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. All right, the ayes have it. The Amendment Number Four has been approved. We will now move to item 12, Business and Finance. This is referring back to Renee, I mean, Mr. Brajas's consideration of possible action to approve superintendent's recommendations regarding payments to be made to contractual employees who are asked to report to duty during the Bear County and City of San Antonio Stay Home Work Safe Orders. Recommended action requires a vote. Is there any more discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move, we approve as recommended by the staff.
Okay, Mr. Lopez has the motion. Is there a second?
Ms. Harrell? Oh, sorry. No, no, that's fine, Karen.
Ms. Freeman, are you seconding?
I am seconding.
Okay, Ms. Chumley, do you have a question?
I did, Carol, I just had a question for Renee. So does, how long does this cover? Or is this just taking it through a certain date? I'm sorry, Renee, I wasn't sure on your presentation what, how far this goes.
Yes, this will take the premium pay earned by the employees who need approval by the board because they are contracted from March 25 to May 1.
Okay, and then are we not going to have any premium pay going forward? Are, because of the changes in the stay home?
Except for two groups of employees, which I'll let Dr. Woods describe, premium pay ended on May 1. But there are two groups that have been identified by staff that Dr. Woods can tell you about who will be engaged in different activities, which will still be eligible for premium pay after May 1.
So the two groups that are still earning premium pay while the city and the county have a stay home order are those that are coming into contact with the public directly in our feeding program, but none of the folks that are contract employees are directly involved in that work on a daily basis. That's why we go ahead and bring the approval now. But that's not to say that, God forbid, the health situation change, we might have to go back into premium pay at some future date, in which case we would have to bring a similar action for the board's approval at some time in the future. But because we ended this on May the 1, it seems appropriate to bring it now.
And Brian, there's, we are not, we're not anticipating any situations where our exempt employees are going to have to be, like, say overseeing the feeding program during the summer, or, you know, there's not, if there is a situation where we have, or even like, but those are hourly. So I guess, I was thinking like the police department, our facilities, or there, you know, there's not going to be any circumstances where we would anticipate.
Not given what we know today, no.
But we can always come back, like you said. So if an employee, you know, is asked to do something where they're in that circumstance, then they can always submit that and request for that. How does that, how does that work, Brian?
The premium pay has to be authorized at the senior staff level. So only, it would only, only if we change the operating rules we're using now, would that be, would that apply. But if it, if something changed and we had to ask folks to do that work, we would simply have to come back to the board and go through a similar process in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so recommended action is for approval. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll move approval. That's Katie.
All right, Ms. Reed?
Second.
Second.
Second, Melissa?
Okay, Melissa Chumley, second. All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. The ayes have it. It's been approved, and we will now move to Human Resources, item 13, Health Insurance Plan for 2021. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Carol. Give me just a minute, and I will share my screen. We have a short presentation.
If I can just tee something up real quick while Patty's getting it up and going. Typically, we would bring health insurance over the summer in June or July, but as this year, it's actually good news. We wanted to do it before employees who are, who don't work all summer leave for a little while. So we thought we'd bring it early this year.
All right. So as Dr. Woods said, we are bringing you our medical review to look at tonight. So Northside issued a formal request for proposal for medical insurance to five vendors in that market. Aetna and Cigna declined to bid, but we did get three responses. I'll remind everyone that our incumbent vendor is United Healthcare, and we are currently giving our employees lots of choices by having six medical plans. In response to the RFP, Blue Cross Blue Shield gave us a single option for a two-year rate guarantee with a 4% decrease from current rates, and they could offer five out of six medical plan options. Humana gave us a single option for a one-year rate guarantee with a 5% decrease from current rates, and they could offer five out of the six medical plan options. United Healthcare gave us two options for a one-year rate guarantee with a reduction of 7% from current rates and no plan changes, or a two-year rate guarantee with no changes to current rates. Please feel free to stop me anywhere along the line for questions or comments.
Patty, wait, just, wait just a second on that. So Blue Cross was offering a two-year rate guarantee and they're, and a 4% decrease from what we're currently paying. Just hang on just one second. Let me read that just real quick, Patty. Oh, okay, so United Healthcare is doing seven, they're deviating 7% from their current rates, and United Healthcare is who we have right now, and they're offering a two-year rate guarantee. I just find that really interesting that they're deviating their current rates 7%. I just find that interesting. That's it.
All right. And so we did consider all four options carefully, noting the rate decreases that were offered, but ultimately decided in our recommendation that the two-year options were in the best interest of the district. Our concern, of course, is the economic uncertainty due to the COVID-19 pandemic going into the 2021 legislative session and its possible impact on state funding for schools in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. So making a two-year commitment and eliminating the risk of a premium increase will help mitigate that uncertainty as well as minimizing disruption for our employees. All right, this is a busy slide, but it's a side-by-side rate comparison of the two two-year options that were offered, the one from United Healthcare and the one from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Column one is going to show you the medical tiers. Column two is going to show you the enrollment in each of our plans. Column three, these are current offerings, which each of the rates and the plans listed here. The first three are traditional plans. The bottom three are high deductible plans. You can see down here in the bottom that the annual total for, that we paid this year, a little over $93 million. This column four is the United Healthcare two-year rate guarantee plan. And you can see the same, little bit over $93 million. This last column is the Blue Cross Blue Shield two-year plan or offering, again with the 4% decrease at a cost of 89, a little bit over 89 million, with a note that they could offer five out of the six plans. Ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. This slide shows a side-by-side comparison of the two two-year options with column one being the terms and conditions set forth in the RFP plus a premium holiday credit offer. Column two is the United Healthcare option, and column three is the Blue Cross Blue Shield options. Please note that some of the responses in the Blue Cross Blue Shield column are showing in red to indicate a difference from United Healthcare responses to the RFP terms and conditions. Some of these changes are minor, but there are a few major changes we'd like to point out to you. Please note that both offers a premium holiday credit with the Blue Cross offer being at $1 million and the United Healthcare offer being $1.46 million. The next is the quarterly billing. Our plus or minus 3% variance is our preferred way to reconcile billing. This is currently enforced with United Healthcare. The Blue Cross Blue Shield option is only available with self-billing. If we change to the Blue Cross Blue Shield option, there obviously would be a longer implementation period for open enrollment and would require all of our employees to actively enroll instead of passively enroll, as many would in the UHC option with no plan changes and no rate changes. Currently, the Methodist Hospital system is our ACO network. ACO is accountable care organization which assumes responsibility for Medicare patients. This would remain in effect with the UHC plan, but ACO is not currently available in the Blue Cross Blue Shield San Antonio market.
Patty, can you explain that? I'm not, so, so that would be like dependents who are, who are, their primary is now Medicare? I'm not understanding what you're talking about on this.
I may have to call on some of our experts. Frank or Tim, are you available?
Melissa, why don't you let us work on that in the background, and maybe we circle back to that.
Okay, all right. The RFP listed 12 possible hospital networks and UHC networks with 10 of the 12 systems, and Blue Cross works with eight of the 12. Plan designs with United Healthcare would not change. All six would be available, but as we But as we've mentioned before, the Blue Cross option only contains five similar plans, which would require 671 employees to migrate to, to other plans. And here's one of the bigger ones. Currently, prescription drug step therapy is not required for the UHC option, but under the new plans for Blue Cross Blue Shield, it would be required. And this would be huge for our employees, the prescription step therapy.
Patty, I'm sorry. I'm not understanding what, what that is. I, I don't know what that means. So if you could get a definition on that as well.
Hey Patty, I think Frank, Frank's available to speak if, if you'd like him to do that.
That would be great.
Ms. Chumby?
Yes. Hey Frank.
How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Step therapy would require our employees to go to a lower-cost drug if they're taking a current, uh, legend drug right now. So they would have to go to a lower-cost drug uh, as a startup before they could migrate up if, uh, the doctor required that.
Well, Frank, I'll just, from personal experience, USC is, is refusing to pay for medications and less you end up taking like a generic. I think that's what you're saying.
No, that's what Blue Cross would require you to do.
Well, UHC is requiring that too, Frank. So I'll get with you later on that.
Okay.
But that's what it means is if there is a generic available, then um, Blue Cross Blue Shield would require that you use the generic instead of the prescribed medicine from your doctor.
That is correct.
Okay. And then what is the ACO? I, I don't know what that is.
Well, in, in this case is ACO. Our employees go to the Methodist Hospital. It's, it's, it's a one-system unit only. So they only can go to the Methodist Hospital and Blue Cross is not currently offer that facility currently.
Okay, I'm, but, but our employees can go to 10 out of 12 hospital networks. So
That's right.
Is it just a certain kind of employee that can only go to Methodist?
Just, just on this particular, uh, the Nexus Plan only with this apply. Uh, the Nexus Plan is one out of six plans.
Okay, Frank, I'm sorry. So on the Nexus Plan.
Right. The only facility you could go to would be the Methodist Hospital. Currently, Blue Cross would move those employees into their HMO plan because they don't have an ACO plan currently.
Okay. And explain what ACO is.
It's affordable. It's Affordable Care Organization. Basically, it just means we funnel all the business to one facility.
Okay, but if I want to go right now, if I want to go to Baptist, I can go to Baptist. Right?
If
I don't have to go to Methodist under United Healthcare.
You could if you're not in the Nexus Plan. If you're in a Nexus Plan, the only facility you could go to is the Methodist Hospital.
So this is limited to one particular type of plan. And who is, who's in the Nexus Plan? Because some, Patty, I thought had mentioned Medicare. And so I was just trying to figure out if this was saying if you had a dependent who was on Medicare.
No.
They could only go to Methodist. I'm, I'm not, I didn't understand who was only, could only go to Methodist.
No, it would not, just disregard the, the Medicare quit statement. And any employee that's on the Nexus Plan, they could only go to, to Methodist Hospital. If I am an employee at Northside and on any one of the other five plans, I can go to any facility that I want to.
Okay. And the Nexus Plan is, um, who, who uses the Nexus Plan? So is that like an, an HMO or PPO or high deductible or which one is?
It's a high deductible health plan.
Oh, okay. There it is. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I, I was just, I was confused on that. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Frank, thank you for the bailout on that. I was attempting to be, um, smarter than I look and looked up ACO and it did came up accountable care organization and had Medicare involved. But I should have asked you that question before I spoke. So thanks for bailing me out on that one.
No problem.
Patty, you do a great job. I just, you know, I've just become so much more sensitive to healthcare recently. And so that's why I had the questions. Thank you.
Certainly. Thanks. Thank you for the question. All right. Um, continuing on with kind of some of the red areas. UHC uses their staff to support our open enrollment activities. Their staff comes and assists our employees that need one-on-one care, um, to, in deciding what plans to choose. And Blue Cross Blue Shield would use their staff too, but also they use outside contractors to help. And last but not least, the United Healthcare Plan offers flu season at our open enrollment to all employees up to 2,000, um, with no cost to the medical plan. But with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the flu shots would be a direct expense to the medical plan. All right. This is a busy slide, but to show you that this is a side-by-side comparison of the plan designs with the UHC option. There are no changes at all to what we had this year. And the Blue Cross Blue Shield again does not offer plan number five. Uh, anybody that was in plan five, if we go to this, would need to, to move possibly to plan four and note a little bit again in red, we've got in plan four and plan six. Um, the, uh, prescription copays would only be at 80% instead of a, at 100% where it is with UHC. And that is our last slide. So in summary, we truly believe a two-year option is the way to go due to financial uncertainty related to COVID-19. And because of these other changes that we mentioned, we are recommending approval for United Healthcare's two-year renewal option with no plan changes and no rate changes. Dr. Woods, do you have comments?
Uh, the only thing I would add is, is back to the original decision about whether to go with a two-year option or a one-year option that would actually decrease, um, cost. The, the two-year is based on the significant, uh, worry about uh, what the financial picture for public schools will look like after the 2021 legislative session. And the notion that if we could get a two-year guarantee, it would carry us through what could be a pretty painful financial year uh, for us and other schools.
All right. Thank you, um, for adding that. Um, that means a lot. Um, Mr. Lopez, do you have any questions or discussion?
Yeah. Patty, could you also mention, um, and, and, and this was presented in the Finance Committee meeting last week. Uh, but Patty, could you go back and mention something about how, uh, there was a period in time that, uh, a current medical provider allowed for, uh, some of those employees because of the, I, I think it was because of the COVID virus and where they had lost, some of the employees, spouses or dependents had lost jobs, so they were able to jump into our plan. Can you explain a little bit of that and how that happened? Or, or I'm not sure if it was maybe Frank or, or you that talked about it. Could you explain that?
I think Ms. Freeman was actually the one that brought it up and reminded us all that United Healthcare allowed us to open up, open enrollment again and allow any of our employees who either didn't take any of our coverage or change any of our coverage because of what was going on with COVID, to actually enroll in, in some of our plans or change some of their plans. So Frank, uh, you know, uh, help me out on this one too, please.
That's, that's correct, Patty. What you said is for any employee that didn't take the medical plan or then that their spouse or the kids, uh, UHC allowed them, uh, I believe the first of April to go ahead and enroll. And we had an open enrollment period for two weeks, I believe.
Okay. Well, no, I just wanted to highlight that. I thought that was a good thing. Um, so thank you Frank and Patty. And then, you know, for Karen as well as bringing that up during our committee meeting. So, uh, uh, Madam President, if there's any, if there's no other questions, I move for approval.
Okay. I do see Melissa Chumby's hand up, but it could have been from before.
No, it's not, Carol. I was just waiting to see if anyone else had any, in, any, any questions. Um, okay. So Patty, I need you to help me. So in that first, very first screen, it said that United Healthcare was 7% less and then from current rates and Blue Cross was 4% from our current rates. So those rates that you're showing, the, the one that you showed where they were side-by-side on what their cost is, Blue Cross Blue Shield is less. So are we saying that, that UHC was actually 7% higher? Because them deviating for, they're still less. Um, their cost is still less than what UHC is now. And UHC is deviated from that first green 7% off of their cost.
Melissa, that was only for a one-year option with UHC. The 7% was only available if we just took a one-year option.
Oh, one year. Okay, thanks Patty.
And they gave us a second option of two-year.
Okay, thank you. I knew I was missing something. You know, the only thing is that, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield is less and it's $4 million less on, from a total standpoint. But there's pieces about Blue Cross Blue Shield, like the generic that, you know, they're saying that they will make you do that because there's some, some, um, of our employees that, you know, are on specific drugs because that's what the doctor is telling them they need for that. I don't know. So Patty, from an HR perspective, what, and I don't know if you've done a survey recently or prior to this, um, on the health, you know, but have you, I mean, do we have any kind of feel for what our employees are feeling about UHC, how happy they are with it? Have they encountered, have they encountered problems?
We do a survey at the end of every year. Um, and so we, the most recent one would have been at the end of, of last year, I believe. Um, and for the most part, people are happy with the plan. There are certainly, certain individuals with certain, you know, situations, um, that, you know, they're, they're maybe not be happy. But again, we give six choices of six plans, um, some very affordable, some, you know, Cadillac plans. Um, so I think the, the amount of choice that we give is what they, what they like. Um, and so we certainly also, United Healthcare gives us an on, uh, property representative. His name is Albert Canales. And I think if you ask anyone who's ever visited with, with Albert, he certainly listens and does anything and everything he can to provide information, to review claims, to explain why something can't be paid or, or tries to help with a, do something different. And he's with us four days a week, um, eight hours a day. And he's just a, an amazing young man, um, that, that really helps out our employees a lot. And so anybody who's been or knows Albert loves Albert and loves, you know, what he does with UHC. For us.
Thank you. I, so I'm just going to share with my fellow trustees. The reason that I'm hesitant on that is I know Albert very well because I have found dealing with UHC, um, to be very challenging. And Albert has, I, in fact, I talk to him all the time. And so that, that's just my concern. But I mean, but if we're not seeing that, you know, Patty, if you're not seeing that from the majority of, you know, our employees, I mean, one, one is, but I'll just tell you, my personal experience with UHC has not been good. And I've had to engage Albert practically every time I've had any kind of dealing with them. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of hesitant.
Has he been helpful?
Oh, he's wonderful. He's wonderful. And had you said that they, he wasn't going to be there anymore, I absolutely, absolutely would not support this because he really, he really does make it easier. And, um, he's been great. And I want to do a shout out to Frank too, because I've actually had to engage Frank before. And, um, he's been really helpful when that has occurred as well. So, um, I just, you know, I, I just am wanting, I think Karen and I have talked about it. I think I'm wanting something from healthcare that is gone and not coming back. And, uh, so I think y'all have done a really good job to try to, um, do the best for our, our employees as we can. And Brian, I do agree with you. I think next year, the healthcare is going to be a whole nother situation with everything after we come out of this year of COVID.
Yeah, I think the ability to lock in a rate guarantee for two years, which we haven't seen in what, 10 years at least, is a good opportunity for us to execute.
I agree. Thank you.
Ms. Freeman, do you have a question or a comment?
I do. Um, in, in my experience with dealing with insurance companies, each one of them have their own, their own challenges and everybody's, um, everybody that interfaces has a different, has a different issue. Uh, in, in the past though, as a large organization as Northside is, it seems as though anytime we have a change in our insurance, there's always some, um, concerns from our staff. There, some of the, sometimes doctors change, network changes, hospitals are different, emergency care is different, all of that. So I think if, if it makes sense to keep what we have, um, I think there's less disruption with our staff. And I think in general, they're, they're usually okay with what, uh, with what they're used to as opposed to perhaps, uh, perhaps some unknown possibility of changing doctors and, and all of that. So. Um, I do have a, I do have a question on, um, okay, so I lost it.
Okay. My question escapes me. Patty, I may have to get back with you at another time.
Of course.
All right. Any other questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor from Mr. Lopez. Is there a second?
I would second it.
All right. Ms. Freeman, um, we'll do an, here it is. Okay. Roll call vote, um, again. Uh, Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt? Mr. Blunt? I see. There you are.
I got it. Aye.
Ms. Chumby?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. The ayes have it. Um, the health insurance plan for 2021 has been approved and we will now move to administration, folks, middle school cap, Mr. Galendo.
Thank you, Dr. Harrell, Dr. Woods trustees. We actually brought this proposal to, uh, policy last month. I know it seems like a long time ago. I'll be handing it over to Debbie, which Leanne, I think she needs to share her screen. So I'm giving you a heads up there. But to give you some context before she presents, as you know, uh, there are pockets in Northside of a fast growth still. And so one of those areas is the Callison area. Um, as, uh, as illustrated by Callison Elementary, Harlan, and of course, folks, middle school that are really growing and, uh, growing at a fast pace, I should say. So this year, uh, in August, our school year, I should say, folks opened up with a little over 1,770 students, 772, to be exact, and quickly went up to 800, 8,000. So folks has hovered at about 1,800 students all of this year. Uh, and is projected to go up to almost 2,000 possibly for next year. And so with those numbers, uh, we tasked Debbie and at some level Eric to research and plan and see what it is that we could do to keep them, uh, below that number. And so, um, they came up with a plan for a, a one-year cap that would go into effect for next year, uh, to keep, uh, folks hopefully around that 1,800 number. Uh, and then look for a date, uh, that we would, after a certain date, uh, any student registered, we would send to, or cap to another campus. Um, so the two campuses that, uh, through their work, uh, we're proposing are Jefferson and Briscoe. And the goal is to keep all of these schools at a reasonable number and folks, again, as I said, at that 1,800, at least for that one year before we open the next middle school, which will be during the 21, 22 school year. And so this will set us up for the, uh, next school year, uh, and keeping it at, at a reasonable number. And then of course, uh, more to come in the fall as we begin to discuss the boundary for the new middle school. Uh, and then when that's all said and done, hopefully have relief, uh, for all of the schools in that area. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Debbie to So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Debbie to give you the details as to how they came to this proposal and how this will work effective. We're looking at a date now of June 1. We did look at May 1st, but with everything going on and so forth. Still want to capture, we feel, even with the June 1 deadline, or date, I should say, approximately 150 students to keep folks at a, at a reasonable number. So Debbie?
Okay. Is I successful? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So as, as Ray had mentioned, the need, why do we need a cap? Folks Middle School is projected to increase to about 2,000 students. The actual projection for base day is a little over 1,900 students. But this is an area that continues to grow throughout the school year. And before we can open Callison Ranch Area Middle School. And that middle school that Ray alluded to is scheduled to open in the 2122 school year. So a year from this August. And obviously would be designed to relieve folks. And we'll go through that boundary, boundary process this fall. In 2021, it's not just, are we worried about the size? But it would also, folks would also be near its capacity with maximum portable. So just from a management standpoint, we don't want to have 2,000 students in a middle school. But we would also be up against its max capacity with portables. And if we're a little wrong, that would create another set of issues. The enrollment cap is a method that we've used historically in Northside, both at middle school and a high school throughout the years. When we have a campus that is expected to exceed its capacity with maximum portables until we can bring a new school online. And these are some very broad numbers to give you a feel. Folks, Briscoe and Jefferson, folks is the school we need to provide relief to. And then neighboring campuses, the closest adjacent campuses are Briscoe and Jefferson. We'll look at those on the map in just a moment. Their capacity, calculated capacity next year without portables. Folks is about 1438, Briscoe 1320, and Jefferson 1363. All the campuses currently have portables on their grounds. If we were to calculate the maximum capacity with the maximum number of portable facility says we can safely put on the property. Folks' maximum capacity would be 2,036, which is why we're concerned. We're also right up against that about 2,000 as they would grow out throughout the school year. And that would be with 14 portables. Briscoe can hold 1,826 students with 12 portables on the ground. And Jefferson 1685 with nine portables. I mentioned earlier that the projection for Folks is not close to 2,000. It's closer to the 1,900 end, but we expect they would continue to grow during the year. We call that our projected peak and we expect they would be right just below 2,000. We expect Briscoe to be around 1538 at their peak. And Jefferson just below 1,400 at their peak. The goal is to find students that would be new moving into the area that we could take out of Folks. And instead of enrolling as a new student at Folks and shift those students to both Briscoe and Jefferson. And in an ideal world, we'd like to have them a little more balanced. We do have more capacity, as you can see with portables at Folks and Briscoe than we do at Jefferson. So we wanted to be mindful of that. And leave room at each of those campuses in case our estimates are off, that we have some wiggle room. So we don't move one exceeding capacity problem from Folks to another campus. The projection with the cap I'll show you is that Folks would be about 1,700 students. And I say plus because again, if we're not capping the entire school and I'll show you that so it would continue to grow. Have Briscoe around 1,700 and Jefferson at around 1,530. When we wanted to look at how to manage this, I'm going to make my screen a little bigger just so you can focus on the map. And don't worry, there's some numbers on here. You don't, those are just zone numbers. But I will show you detailed numbers on the next slide. But basically, this whole area that I'm outlining, this is all this kind of yellow color. And then down here in the green, this pink area following this blue line. And then all the way up here, this is the current Folks attendance area. So we looked at how would we identify areas that would be geographically ideally furthest from Folks and closest to Jefferson and Briscoe, which are the closest middle schools geographically to Folks. In doing this, we would like to try to capture between 200 and 300 students from now when we start the cap to the end of the 2021 school year. Again, because this area does continue to grow throughout the year. In the, the map I'm showing you, what we're recommending is that the yellow area, this area out here would not be capped. And this green area would be capped here to Briscoe. And the pink areas would be capped to Jefferson. These are based on a cap study. Almost, we would expect almost equitable numbers from the two areas. There are some challenges in this cap study because we look at historical growth, not only from new sales, but also from turnover that occurs during the school year as well as during the summer. And most of our growth from turnover as well as new sales occurs during the summer. Makes sense, families relocate them. This one's a little more challenging because we have so many new areas that are coming online and have come online very recently in this area. So you don't have as much history. But we feel it's that we can capture a reasonable number of those students. In this area, that's kind of to the north of Folks. This is, a lot of this is Government Canyon area, kind of the donut in, in the middle of Folks attendance area, if you will. And the reason we would not recommend capping these outer, very distant areas are, one, they're much more rural and we see, have a smaller number of students residing in those areas. And then we also see a much smaller rate of turnover. Either sales from new homes because they're very, it's slower in building. But also turnover, families tend to hold on to their homes in those areas longer period of time than you do in a more densely populated subdivision. So because of the low numbers, we would recommend that you would leave those areas not capped. So any new students moving into those areas would go ahead and enroll in Folks. It also helps our transportation staff. Because when we have a cap, we have to run buses. And if you're running a bus through this area to go to Folks and then a bus to either Jefferson or Briscoe from this area, it's very inefficient given the, the large distances. So the recommendation in this proposal is all of these yellow areas would remain in Folks. And I'll walk you through on the next slide in great detail the neighborhoods that are included. The red numbers that are on here are zone numbers. That's what we refer to as the, the number for each piece of geography. So it's not numbers of students. The green areas, we looked at these areas that were, and the way they will, they would travel from their neighborhoods and we're recommending they would come and travel south to Briscoe. The pink areas here, we recommend they would travel to Jefferson. And I'll address this area right here. This is Davis Ranch, which is the subdivision that's right behind Folks Middle School. In an ideal world, that's new and lots of cleared land and lots of land under development. We would, building going on. Ideally, we would like to cap this area as well. However, because it is the neighborhood school for Folks, after speaking with staff, we've made the recommendation that we would not cap Davis Ranch neighborhood since it is where Folks is located. So new families moving into that particular subdivision would continue to enroll in Folks. And take you to the next screen and let me focus on the areas where then the numbers are in the neighborhoods. The red numbers here correspond to the map key over here on the left. But just to kind of walk you through so you're familiar with some of the neighborhood areas. The areas, just, this is 1604, this is Calabria Road right here. This is FN 1560, kind of going between this number 10 and 15. This is Gom Road as it comes past Folks and Government Canyon's entrance. And comes down kind of in between nine, numbers nine and 18 down here. Back to Calabria and come, this is Calabria coming out here. The area out here in gray, this is Medina Valley School District. As we come down here, this is actually the Bernal Middle School area. This is in Northside, but Bernal. So we looked at the areas in green because these subdivisions, most of them come in and out of Calabria right here. I'll address the, the area. Those folks would travel this way down Calabria Road and could come into Briscoe. There's another entrance, they could travel, multiple entrances along Calabria. But they're all coming out and down Calabria either way to get to Briscoe. Number one, this area, this is Callison Ranch, the Lennar Neighborhood. That's an existing area. We've had homes there for quite some time. That's where Henderson Elementary is located. But there's also new development and they continue to expand in the back and as well as some in the very front. So a combination of homes that have been existing for some time as well as new development going on. And I, I'll mention this in several of these areas, but there are, this is an area where we are over yielding students. We have some very affordable priced homes. Builders have been very successful in bringing homes at $200,000 or below for starter home prices. So that's where we get the over yielding and rapidly growing areas.
Hey Debbie, Debbie, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just real quickly, can you point out where the new, where the new middle school will be?
Sure. So the middle school, the transportation station, Harlan High School, those are all right down in here. This is Calabria Road. So they sit on the south side of it.
Okay. And what's that gray area underneath?
This is Medina Valley School District.
Okay, that's what I thought. We really, but right up there.
We do, we do. This, so all this area is Medina Valley right here. This is Geronimo, known as the Geronimo area. This is all Medina. Now, when you come right back in here, this part, and I apologize, we should have made this, it doesn't show up as two differentiated colors very well on this map. This is right here, this is part of the Bernal Middle School attendance zone that comes up along Tally Road. Tally Road comes up like this. But this area right here is not. This is Medina Valley School District, this kind of little funny shaped piece.
When we open the new middle school, I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it. Just a guesstimate of kind of what areas would you, will we be looking at that will be, you know, will be affected by a move?
So just when you look purely off geography, Briscoe's here. And you saw the numbers, we're going to need to provide them a little bit of, of relief.
Right.
Folks is here and the new middle school is here. So the most obvious thing is that we would start in this geographic area. What we, these areas that are more rural out here, a lot of these folks come down out 1283 and back in this way. So if they're traveling in and past the middle school, then we, the new middle school, we would probably include those areas as well. We have several scenarios that we'll be bringing to you this fall. One of the challenges, as you can understand the dense development in this area. And remember that we are going to be opening an elementary school next year here. We're in the process of acquiring property for the second elementary school in Bond 2018 that will also provide relief for this area. And we have the high school right here. So we're, we are, Pam and Tia and I are working in tandem, really trying to look at what feeders look like and what all the potential boundaries might be for both the two new elementary schools, the middle school and the high school. And that is extremely challenging. So don't hold me to anything right now.
I'm not, but you know what I'm driving at is,
Yes.
You know, when we're capping, are we trying to cap or look at areas that we anticipate may end up, you know, at the new school?
Sure. So and, and to your point, Mrs. Chumley, in the past, when we've had caps, a lot of times they've been two or three years long. So we were able to start with smaller pieces of geography. And we really tried to look at those considerations. But this is very challenging because we're trying to capture a large number of students in one year. So you have to expand the geography that you're capping in order to capture enough students to make the cap worthwhile and, and meet the goal of providing relief so that Folks does not have 2,000 students.
I just, you know, from a long time ago, when we had stuff and we capped around the school. And then we let, you know, people that were further out come in. Then we had the argument of, well, but I've lived here X number of years, paid taxes X number of years. And now you're letting someone who's way out there, you know, move in where the centerpiece are the ones that feel, I guess, punished in, in a way for having to, you know, particularly like you look right at Folks, you've got the pink area right by it.
We do. And, and again, it has to do with the, the very vast development, densely populated communities in these areas and the rapid sales. And I mean, we're selling homes even during this COVID situation. I helped two families today with registration questions as they were moving into this attendance area at the elementary school. So we are continuing to see those sales. In policy, when we discussed this, the question did come up. Well, what if we're wrong, given everything we're, we're involved in right now? And what if Folks doesn't get as much growth as we thought? Well, then we can, it may be that all three of those schools won't have to be quite as large as we're planning for. And that would be kind of the best of all worlds, right? It's a win-win situation if we don't get the growth. Because remember that Briscoe's got its own growth going on as well. So we, we, we feel like we have taken the smallest pieces of geography that we possibly could, where we feel like we can still capture the required students. And remember that if you're a family who's lived in that house for 10 years, you're, and you have a rising sixth grader, you're not subject to the cap. Those students are going to Folks. So the families that live right here and in the pink area that have lived there for a year or two, that lived there prior to the, this capping date, those students are still going to matriculate right into Folks. The cap will affect.
As long as I own a house there, it's just if I'm new moving into the subdivision.
That is correct. And so it is, that is correct. And it will be one year. And the reality is, again, we're going to be changing zones in elementary, at middle school and at high school in this.
So if I'm,
Compact geography.
If I'm in the pink and I moved to Jefferson. So I've moved in thinking I'm going to Folks. I find out I'm going to Jefferson. And I'm sure as soon as this is, you know, reviewed and voted on that, you know, we will let everyone know right away. You know, let all the realtors know and the developers know on it. But, okay, so I've just moved in, think I'm going to Folks, I'm not. So I'm a sixth grader, so I'm going to Jefferson. At the end of the first year, then what happens to me?
So when we finish the 2021 school year, those students that are capped to either Jefferson or Briscoe, so in the pink or the green, that were new moving into the area and subject to the cap. Once we establish the boundary for the new Callison Ranch Area Element, or Middle School right here, if they live in the boundary for the new school, it's a mandatory move. So if I was brand new and I moved into Jefferson and the board approved my neighborhood to go to the new middle school over here, then my seventh grade year, I'm moving to the new middle school. It's a mandatory move when we open a new school unless you're a rising eighth grader. That's your board's policy.
Debbie, I understand that, but that is such a tough period in a kid's life. And we're talking that they're going to be in two different, they're going to,
It is, but so here's,
Starman twice.
Sure, but here's the reality is you could be moving into one of these areas even if we didn't have a cap and start as a sixth grader at Folks. And then as a seventh grader, be going to the next, to the new middle school. That's the reality when we have boundaries and changes.
Debbie, you would, you'll be having, if that were the situation, then there would be a group of you that would be moving together. So instead now, I'm a new to the Northside District sixth grader. So I'm going to be at Jefferson. I've got a Starman farm and figure out where I belong. And then probably right at the time when I'm figuring out where I'm going to be at the end of my sixth grade year, now going into seventh, you're moving me and I'm having to do it all over again.
That is, that is, that is correct. And that would be the case if they were capped to Jefferson, to Briscoe or to Folks if the area is in the boundary. So let's play another scenario. If you look and I'll, you know, again, I don't want to presume that what I, what you're going to prove for a middle school boundary, but right, the furthest area away is least likely to go to the new middle school. So if you were new moving into this area and you were at Jefferson and you as a sixth grader, and then we established the boundary and your neighborhood is not part of the new middle school, when we lift the cap at the end of the, of next school year, that you're given the option, you can finish at Jefferson for seventh and eighth grade. Your family's responsible for providing transportation. But you can stay at Jefferson for that continuity of education. No, we're not bringing new people in. But if you were already there, we forced you to start there, you can finish. Or you would have the choice to go back to Folks if that, if your neighborhood was still in the Folks attendance area. So we give families that option.
Yeah, I really don't like this. But I'm not, but I'm not sure I have anything to recommend to you that would be better.
Sure. And, and it is, these are the, the same capping rules that we've used historically, both for middle school and high school. And we have those struggles every time we have a cap. And, and I understand that, but it is not desirable to have 2,000 students at Folks Middle School or potentially more than that if we're wrong and not have enough. or potentially more than that if we're wrong and not have enough desks for everybody, if you will, or classrooms. Let me walk through the neighborhoods a little bit, just in case anybody has questions about those. So we talked about Callison Ranch, Valley Ranch, number two, this is the area where Callison Elementary School is located. And, you know, the little, little, little schlitteron at the front, very rapidly growing, kind of wraps around to the back. Area number three is Waterford Park. That's over right by the, the new school. Number four is actually an air, Water Wheel Trails. It's a new area, very, very affordable starter homes. It starts here and kind of wraps around to the back around an existing subdivision, which is number five, Wingate Ranch. So Wingate Ranch is an existing subdivision. It's been there for some time. There was some newer building going on in the back, but that's very little activity there. So older established areas surrounded by new, very rapidly growing community.
And chances are Debbie, if I could, chances are that most of that area will then go to the new middle school.
So that would, highly likely because of where it is located geographically.
Yeah. And, you know, it's just unfortunate that we're having to do this with only just one year left. That's the part, as she mentioned earlier, that we've not really had that happen before. So kids would have stayed a couple of years at least. And so this one, this one is very unique.
Sure. We, we knew, Mrs. Reed, when we pushed this out of the, the middle school, out of Bond 2014 into Bond 2018 to help balance the size of those issues, we understood that it was likely Folks would be about 1,900 students before we could open it. It is, neighborhoods are yielding at a higher yield than we had expected. And some of the development has come on faster with the more affordable homes that the builders have been able to provide in this, these communities in the last couple, last two to three years. And so dealing with 1,800 and some kids for one year versus 2,000 students and hitting right up against that max capacity, administration felt we needed to take action.
Okay.
So into the, the pink areas that we would recommend would go to Jefferson. Number six area is right here along Calabria. That is Arroyo Seco Villas. That's a multifamily, small community, single fam, or a single story multifamily community. And right next to that, number 11 is Calabria Creek, which is a multifamily apartment community. That's very new and was under construction. Right here, number 22, and I'm going to skip around and try to take you geographically a little bit. Number 22 is Stillwater Ranch. That's the large subdivision that has Scarborough Elementary in it. Number 23 is Elise de Calabria. And again, they have an entrance here on Calabria as well as an entrance here on 1560. These folks here have the, in Stillwater, the ability to come in and out here of Calabria. They can also come out through Silver Oaks subdivision and come out right here on 1560. These folks enter and exit right here on Calabria. Number 19, Ramuda Ranch. There's two parts of Ramuda Ranch and they enter and exit right here along FM 1560, excuse me, Gom Road, I apologize, Gom Road. Up here, number nine is an older existing area. That's Canyon Park Estates. Single family homes on larger tracts of land. It's been there for quite some time. Across on the other side of Gom Road is number 18, and that is the Prescott Oaks subdivision. That's a very new subdivision, very much under construction, has all the Dallas Cowboy Street names in it. As you come, as you come around this way, number 21, just on the south side of Gom Road is Silver Oaks. And Silver Oaks actually is this neighborhood and comes all the way back and around down, down here and enters and exits off 1560. So they can come in off 1560 or here off Gom Road. Number 24 is the Tribute Ranch area, which is also newer. Number 15 is Juniper's Edge, which is also newer. And then number 10 on the east side of FM 1560 is Cross Creek, and that's a single family subdivision that's currently still under construction. So these folks all enter and exit here off, off of 1560. So any of these, into these neighborhoods that I just mentioned, kind of in this rectangular area, can traverse through Gom Road or through Calabria to get to 1560 to Jefferson. There are some options coming through neighborhoods because they're connected as well. You come on the north side of Gom Road here, these are, number 17 is Lara Heights. And Lara Heights is a long skinny neighborhood that goes back this way. That is right across, if you will, from Franklin Elementary. That is a older built out existing neighborhood that's been there for some time. Number eight is Bryce Wood, and it's just to the east of that area. That's a new subdivision that's currently under construction. And number 20, Silver Canyon, is just to the west of that, adjacent to the Davis Ranch area, and that is also under construction. The areas up here, as you get into these areas, these are older existing neighborhoods. Beverly Hills, Hearthstone Ranch, Hunter's Ridge Estates, Lantana Oaks, Halotus Ranch Acres and Windstone. So those are older existing areas. So that would be the proposed cap area that would go to Jefferson. And again, these folks traverse up and down 1560 to get to Jefferson. And that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions? All right, I'm, oh, Ms. Chumley.
I, I just had one. Debbie, how many portables do we have at Folks right now?
Folks currently has seven allocated portables, two portables on reserve, so nine to classroom buildings and one restroom portable. So 10 total buildings.
And you're saying to accommodate what you anticipate, the almost 2,000 children would take 14?
That, we would have to max that out and 14 is the maximum number of portables we would be able to have on the property.
So we'd have to move seven portables. Wait, 14? Yep.
We have, we have, we have nine classroom buildings, so we'd get to 14. And with this plan, we would not need to move any more buildings to Folks. They would keep what they have. We would have to relocate some buildings to Briscoe and Jefferson does not need any other buildings. They have buildings and some on reserve as well. So we would have to move some buildings to the Briscoe area, but not to Folks or Jefferson in this proposal.
And can you, what is the largest middle school that we've had?
Historically? I believe Stinson off the top of my head, or Stevenson. I would have to go back and look. I only have data in front of me right now from 2007 forward. We had about, I think, if I remember correctly, we had about 1,850 students at, at Stinson when we had capped and opened student, or opened Rollinson, if I remember correctly.
Remember?
We're, we're right up about that, against that right now.
Do you remember how many years we ran that higher limit at, at Stinson? I think it was just a couple of years, right?
I would have to go back and look, to be honest with you. I think that one was a couple of years. We had a cap for the, before we opened, let's see, we had a cap, Stinson cap to Rollinson. Before we opened Jefferson, that ran, I think, two years.
Years.
We had a, most of them have been two to three years, Mrs. Chumley.
Okay, that's why this one just looks and feels so different, is what Katie was talking about.
And we, we thought we could kind of eke through it at a very large school for a year, but it's going to be larger than we anticipated.
Okay.
All right, is there any more discussion or any questions? Okay, it's up for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move approval.
Okay, Ms. Reed, sir, second.
Second. I'm sorry.
Was that Mr. Lopez? Okay, Mr. Lopez, second. All right, all those in favor, roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
No.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. So we had six ayes and one no. And we have reached approval. We will now move to superintendent. Consideration and possible action regarding COVID-19 emergency district closure, et cetera. Mr., Dr. Woods?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Dr. Harrell. This is the, a similar resolution to the one the board has considered twice. One in March and the other in April. If, if we can show the resolution, what I want to highlight for the members of the board is that there are three of the pieces of the resolution that I have suggested that we cross out because of the kind of what we've learned in the evolution of the situation. One of those deals with the 1920 school calendar, and obviously we're getting ready to conclude that calendar, so that, that would no longer need to be in there. Item number five, that, that had existed in the past, was with regard to waivers. And as you know, we just took action on waivers tonight. Actually did not use this authority under number five. We went ahead and brought the waivers to the board for approval, like we normally would. And then item number six, to declare a catastrophe as appropriate with the government code, and just don't see that as necessary at this point. What this does leave in the resolution are those items around leave and around compensation. For instance, if we had to go back into a premium pay situation at some point in order to run an essential program, like our feeding program, it also leaves in place the purchasing authority. So think about things like purchasing personal protective equipment, which is going to be a significant issue coming up here pretty, pretty soon in order for us to be able to go back into summer or, or even fall in person in our buildings. So, so that, the resolution does leave that. Again, I went ahead and included an end date. The, the current resolution expires tonight. I went ahead and included an end date that pushes the, the resolution expiration out to the night of the board's regular meeting in July of 2020. Happy to take questions.
Any questions, any comments?
Brian, I just had one. So pretty much all this is just doing is just extending the, the authorities that we had given you from the very beginning.
With the exception of those three that I suggest we delete. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So Brian, where does this fall in relation to, to the task force? And that, that we have in relation to, you know, possible scenarios or what, you know, that the new school year could look like?
This really sits outside of that work. This is just to make sure that the district can operate, especially if decisions have to be made very quickly with regard to pay or leave or purchasing of materials that would enable us to go back to school either in the summer or in the fall.
Okay, but it doesn't have, then it doesn't have anything to do in relation to, to the task force or what they, they, you know, what their recommendations are. All of that will be within a discussion with, with you and the board.
Yes, we'll, we'll have the conversation around the options at least of what school could look like in the, in the fall. I don't know that we'll be able to say this is exactly what it'll look like because we can't predict the future any better than anybody else. But we can certainly say, these are the range of things that we're looking at. And these are the decision, some of the, some of the reasons why we would decide one over another.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this was up for possible action. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
I move approval.
Okay, Ms. Chumley has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Medina, seconded. We'll do all those in favor, roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. The ayes have it, so it's been approved. We will now move to the naming of Farmer on 471 North, area number four, elementary school for discussion and possible action. And I just wanted to take a minute to kind of remind the trustees where we were at the end of our last board meeting. We funneled down to four nomination numbers, number 14, number 18, number 20, and number 21. And we talked about that using this opportunity tonight to talk about these nominees and then take a possible vote to either narrow down or to finalize the namesake. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Carol, can we see the, I'm sorry, Carol, Dr. Harrell, this is Karen.
Yes, I see.
Can we see the numbers as associated with the names on this, on our screen? So we, if we choose to speak to a nominee, we can, we know that we have the, the numbers correct.
It was emailed to us just maybe-
And I'm wondering if it goes on the screen, then the names will appear.
It's an attachment to the-
So I, okay, thank you.
Names on it, so you have names on it.
Oh, I keep using the attachment.
Thank you. I can't, Linda sent it to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it, does anybody see what date, when she sent that?
I think she sent it this morning.
Day?
Yeah, 10 a.m. this morning.
10 a.m. this morning.
It's also-
I found it. I found it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll give everybody a minute to kind of put it in front of us. And then if anyone has any notes or has it, has even another way you'd like to proceed, whatever the wishes of the board are for next steps would be great.
We're going to, Carol, what we're going to do is talk about the persons that have been nominated?
That's, that's what we said last time, that we use this tonight to talk about each of the nominees, whomever would like to speak on their behalf, then take a vote to either narrow down to the top two or come up with a final namesake for, for the voting, if the voting occurs. So I see Karen, Ms. Freeman, would you like to go first?
You're, you're on, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, regarding discussion, I was just going to suggest that perhaps as we go forward, each trustee or a trustee may talk about a particular nominee and regarding reasonings thereof, and then, and then go from there. And have each trustee at least speak one time, and then if there's any additional, then you can, you know, go back and trustees may speak again on, on a particular nominee.
Would you like to make that into a motion? I know we don't need a second, but would you like to move?
I don't, I don't know that we need a motion on the process, Dr. Harrell.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that? Everybody okay then? All right, I'm not hearing any dissension. I'm not hearing any, is there, we move ahead? So if someone, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'd like to go ahead and just make a couple of comments about my nomination.
And, and your nomination is number?
Twenty, 21.
Okay.
You know, and, and please forgive me if I go over a little bit. I'm going to try to keep it within two minutes. But, you know, I, I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about my nominee and the 50 years of service that she had as a counselor, you know, within the district, as a counselor coordinator within the district, vice principal and the principal. You know, I think a lot has been said about the reputation and her, and how people perceived her. You know, and to kind of quote somebody that, that knows her very well and understood how she worked in the district. It was, when they shared to me, was that it was, she is of the shared DNA that has allowed NISD- NISD, NISD to not only meet but exceed state and federal standards. And I thought that was very interesting, because when you're looking at meeting federal and state standards and from a from a district-wide perspective, you're looking at it from a campus level to a district level, and then you're finally looking at it as to the impact that they have at the state level. There were numerous examples of her impact at the campus level. You know, she was recognized for student achievement, you know, under her leadership at the campus, under her tenure, under by the state, you know, they were a recognized campus. She was also one of those leaders and visionary leaders in helping our teachers through their first year, when they would come in as a new teacher. She was one of the first implementers to bring the first-year teachers mentor program to her campus. And then it also became a district-wide program, too. So, you know, that was an excellent model, an excellent program for our teachers. So it talked about how she cared about the kids and their learning as well as our teachers, too. So from a from a community perspective, you know, that was at a campus level, but from a community perspective, I think, you know, my nominee collaborated very well with the community, the business community, the neighborhoods. She was passionate about the community, and they were in turn passionate about her. It was interesting, because, you know, one teacher, one one guest speaker that she would have, when it would come to, you know, doing a what they would call an infusion of basic career goals, which was a was which was a leading idea, you know, back at the time. And that was to encourage kids to look at opportunities, to look at careers, and they would join those careers, those opportunities for careers with the curriculum. And part of showing that would be bringing in lecturers to talk about those different careers and have the kids question those careers and what it would be like and what they would, how much they would make, and, you know, what did they have to do to become a, you know, to be in that field? So, you know, that was a from a district, you know, from a from a district perspective and working with the community, you know, that was very impactful. And it's so much so that I think, you know, it led to where, you know, a lot of what she had done, you know, were modeled, and and it had it had a lot to do with CTE, I guess is what we would call CTE now. But she worked closely with the Lackland Air Force, the general at Lackland Air Force Base, and to promote that program. And they went on a couple of tours here in San Antonio, the different channel, different TV stations, and talked about that program. And it was more so to promote the program to other businesses and have those businesses open up opportunities for our kids to to be involved and to look and or shadow somebody in the business field. So, you know, that that was very impactful, you know, and that was also very needed at the time, you know, to give our kids options. If they didn't want to go to college or seek a higher education, they at least had an option to go into a career, you know, into a business. So, you know, and and I think, you know, from a statewide, you know, she was very impactful there as well, you know, and that, and, you know, and we talk about special populations, her appointment to the to the Texas Juvenile Justice Department Board was very impactful, because it centered around a population of of children that were under the juvenile system. And she was appointed by the governor to to sit on that committee for five years. She was appointed by Rick, Governor Perry, and then also reappointed by Abbott. So she just recently got off. But the main purpose of that appointment was to get a perspective from from an educator within the community that saw the population, that saw the kids, saw how they would could be potentially impacted through incarceration. And and their goal was to, you know, you know, to look at the program, analyze what the impact would be, you know, with these kids if they didn't have services provided to them, such as, you know, education services or, you know, social skill services, things like that. So they strategically planned and would review a lot of the the standards and make it and then ultimately make a recommendation to the governor. So, you know, when I look at that, when I look at her 50 years of service from a campus perspective, from a from a district perspective, and then to a state-level perspective, you know, I I just really, I I am more and more encouraged and want to continue to share her good, share her her career in in being the next, you know, elementary namesake for the district. So, you know, to list a couple of recommend, to list a couple of awards that she earned, she was nominated for the San Antonio Lights as a San San Antonio Light Sunday Woman. And she was chosen by the by the by the staff of the newspaper. She was also nominated as a principal, as a principal of the year at her campus by the PTA. She was also awarded the Human Relations Service Award by the NISD Teachers Association. And, you know, interesting, which also makes sense, is she was awarded by the Texas A&amp;M Shaping the Future Award. So you you could see that in her work and in everything that she did, it was about shaping the future, it was about the kids, it was about the community, you know, being a leader, being in a being there for emotional, being there for the students and the and the children and the and the and the teachers, being there for them emotionally as well as physically and being a leader. She, you know, to me, you know, I have a personal story, but it was just more of a, I remember what she said when I first met her, and it was more of, and the comment that she said to me when we were worried as parents, when we were, when we first started at Carlos Kuhn, I remember the day that we were nervous, we were concerned how how our daughter was going to lead, I mean, how she was going to learn. And the thing that she told me, she goes, oh, don't worry, Mr. Lopez, you know, every child can learn and will succeed. And to me, that was a guiding light for me. It set me at ease. But I also think it was also her her passion and her commitment to the the success of our children was a guiding light for not only me, but for other families as well. So it's with that that I would like to ask you for you to support my nomination and vote for my nomination, my nominee as a next namesake for our elementary campus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great story, great story. It's, would someone else like to share?
I can't find my hand.
Okay, read.
I know there's a hand here somewhere, but I don't know, I can't find it again. I just actually had to read you, because I lost something. So I would like to talk a little bit about nominee number 14. She, first of all, let me say this, we have a number of people here that are all very worthy of having a school nominated for them, a name for them. But number 14 has a 43-year history in Northside, and she not only touched one school, she touched all schools, every elementary, every middle school, and every high school with the programs that she helped develop 40-some years ago, and did all sorts of interesting programming that has touched every student that she, and those students are all over our district. She was very, she's called an innovative visionary. She looked to the future and always looked for opportunities to make Northside first in all those programs. And just to sort of, I'm not going to go on and on on this, but the impossible was transformed into an inspiring challenge that built NISD's reputation as a destination district where every child can live healthy and active lifestyles. And then she also was a pioneer in adaptive physical education for students with special needs and inclusion for all students. So her scope of what she did in Northside touched everybody and every school that we have here. And I think her contributions to Northside certainly are invaluable to us and will continue on into her history. And I know Mr. Blunt had some other things that he would like to talk about, too, so I'll let him do that.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Blunt?
Yes, again, I'll just add briefly beyond, and again, I'm going to speak for number 14 also. And I will at the board, I, you know, I've had the angle of working very closely for a number, actually, decades literally with number 14, so I want everybody to at least know that part of it. So I'm biased a little bit in that particular regard, but I do agree with Katie, we have some some great names before us. Just a couple of quick things to add, even outside of Northside itself. Number 14 really has been had a major impact across the city, community, and the state. And I've provided a couple of examples of things that I've worked with, the Heroes for Health, she's the one that really got all the other districts behind it, came up with a plan for it, continued to engage others across the board, not only our our district, but also the other districts, and took on a leadership role, which really she didn't have to do, which was extremely helpful. The other thing that I will bring up that a lot of people think of the PE side of 14, but the health has always been a big angle also, that we've had opportunity to do some some pretty unique research-type of things that really don't get out, that have been collaborated with a number of our health organizations, from the hospitals to nonprofits, et cetera, that and actually TV channels and other things that, thanks to number 14, were organized. A big part of our engagement with Metro Health and some other institutions also, because of the things that she brought in terms of a leadership, and also because of her collaboration skills and knowing who was who in that particular regard. The last one I'll bring up is when we were trying to figure out when diabetes and other problems that we were facing, how to really help out the different communities in that particular regard, we came up with the idea, now that y'all know, is we have the Northside Soccer League, which is an independent part, but really started within Northside After School Care. But we'd actually tried that about two or three other times. And because of number 14 continuing to be engaged, we, to be honest, we failed a couple of times with it. But when figuring out how we get the community, how to get more organizations involved, is what really made that take off. So now we have some a really good model that others want to copy also. So those are the other things I want to bring up for 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. Ms. Freeman?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Harrell. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Um, yes, like like Katie, this is, this is a time where we've got four really good candidates for this particular school, and it will be it will be a tough decision. Right now, I wish to speak on behalf of nominee number 20. What stands out most to me about this person is his solid moral character and philosophy of selflessness of service. He, I listened to a TED Talk that he did, and he spends a lot of time elaborating about the importance of the importance of service and solid family and personal values. This past January, he was recognized by the City of San Antonio as a Peace Laureate. I didn't realize that that actually existed in the City of San Antonio. It's interesting way to honor people who have made a contribution. He was honored as a Peace Laureate for his contribution to the health and well-being of the city. He was introduced, actually, he was introduced by his nephew. And he was, he was introduced as one who has served on many businesses and business and philanthropic boards, but but remains humble and rooted in family and faith. I know in the nomination, there were several boards that he served on within the community regarding his community service. Some of those include the Catholic Charities, United Way, NPR, and the San Antonio Area Foundation. A recent example of his service, he was featured in a story in the Express News about a month ago regarding the food bank. He had a long-term relationship of service with the food bank, and he simply asked the CEO, Eric Cooper, how he could help. One day, he, his wife, and his nephew actually showed up with 700 PB&J sandwiches and and then 250,000, nearly a $250,000 donation that he was instrumental in raising from his faith community. I I think we have a, I think there's a unique opportunity here to honor this person and his family by naming the school after nominee number 20. He and his family are well-respected within our community. And I know over the years, on occasion, if any of, if they've ever been confronted with any challenges regarding a cultural bias as a threat or or physical harm, they've used that opportunity to talk or to teach about the importance of tolerance and and morals. The entire family would be would be an exemplary or exemplary role model for the students as well as a cherished namesake for the school. Thank you, Dr. Harrell.
Thank you. And before I go to Ms. Chumbly, I I also nominated the same family, and Ms. Freeman used great descriptors and characteristics and and these life lessons that of servant leadership and gratitude that has prevailed. I just was going to add that all four kiddos went to elementary, middle, and high school in Northside. They've been in Northside, their family, for almost 50 years. And so that that piece, one of them has also been, it's hard to do this without saying names, one of our pillars, one of the sons. And so I don't think I want to add anything else other than being on the board of San Antonio Area Foundation, which gives scholarships to not just our kids in Northside, but deserving high school students everywhere. So anyway, with that, Ms. Chumbly, did you want to talk about number 18?
I do. I do. Thank you, Dr. Harrell. You know, there's been times when we've named schools where, you know, we didn't have, I think, sometimes down to the very bottom, as rich a group of individuals as we have on this this round. I think that, and particularly, I really like the way we've done this. I've learned things about individuals who I thought, you know, I knew I knew a lot about to begin with. And so I want to thank trustees for their enthusiasm about the the individuals that they support. So I want to talk to you about number 18. And I think that part of it, you know, what makes this unique and challenging is that we all kind of come to to this with our own feeling of what type of individual deserves to have a school named after them. And so on number 18, I look a lot to the impact that this individual had within his 35 years of teaching in Northside. And what what I found very, very different, I think, from maybe what we've seen in the past from nominations, is that he had this large group of farmer students who really support him, and a farmer trustee, actually, as well, who supports him and had interaction with him when he was was a teacher. And so I I know him on lots of different levels. I know him as a as a student, because he actually was one of my teachers as well. And I know that the love of of kids that he had, you know, when, there were lots of kids, and unfortunately, I was one of them that would be there late, because no one would pick me up. And, you know, he always stayed and made sure that everyone was taken care of. And he went above and beyond many times to help kids that may have been less fortunate that needed help and support. He has stayed connected to the school district in helping other organizations like NEF and CCA with some of his other abilities. And I just, you know, I think that, I think that he's really deserving of it. And and when I look at all four of them, I see different things about each of them that I think, well, you know what, that really fits with what we think a namesake should be. But I really feel that this is his time, and I really think, I was so touched. So let me tell you what one of this group does, is there's a
So let me tell you what one of this group does, is there's a group from one of the high schools where he taught that has created a alumni group that comes out and supports one of our activities related around agriculture. And he, that group will tell you that the reason that they continue to do this is because of the impact that he had on them as a teacher. And so I, I just feel pretty strongly about that. I think that's neat. And where they came in that enthusiasm that they had, I thought, is what really is, is driving me to say that I really feel that we should support him. And I wish we had a dozen more schools that we were gonna open, which would make this so much easier. But I just think that this is his time, and I think with what he's done with kids, he deserves that. Because I, what I like is to think about, what will the namesake do within his school or her school? And I know that I feel very confident that he will be an integral part with those kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chumlee. All right, are there any other comments? Everyone get a chance to speak? All right, so as we talked about earlier, we can call for a vote. We do need a motion, though, but we can call for a vote and then just see where the numbers lie the first time around. Is that acceptable to the board?
Could I make a suggestion, Dr. Green? Why don't we vote for two and let the first, the first place vote count for five, and the second place vote count for three? And I think you'll end up with maybe two, and then we can vote on the final. That would just be my suggestion.
Okay, so let me just repeat that. You're suggesting that we vote for two and our first place, our first choice gets five points, and our second choice gets three points. Is that what you're suggesting?
Right.
Okay, is there another?
If anybody else wants to think about that, I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, or?
No, I think that's fair. That's good.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
Let me wrap it in. So it's five for the first and three for your second place.
Right.
That's Mrs. Reed's suggestion. Ms. Freeman? You have your hand up?
She's muted.
Unmute.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Um, we, we can do that, or I, I think it would be the same if we just did our first, our first vote and then our second. It, it doesn't matter to me. If we had a first choice, it could count for two and the other one would be one. I don't, I don't know that it makes any difference. Just a thought.
Okay, so I heard, I heard from Ms. Reed, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Medina, and Ms. Chumlee to do the first, the first place gets five, second place gets three points. And Ms. Freeman, you said first place gets two points, second place gets one. Mr. Blunt, do you have an opinion one way or the other, or a suggestion?
No, either one of those will work for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Since it seems like, go ahead, Ms. Chumlee. You're on mute.
I said I'm fine with the, the two and one, too, if we want to, you know. I'm trying to think which will narrow the picker for us.
Mathematically, there's not a big difference.
I don't think there is.
One point six eight versus two to one, never mind.
Yeah, Bobby, that, thank you, because that's what I was trying to figure out, is which, you know, how, how that would, if that would make a difference.
I think the math would be simpler on the two and one. That's why I don't think mathematically, unless Ms. Reed, you want to add to that?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so everyone has their, we're gonna have to double-check our math on this one. So I just want to repeat what we're gonna do. We're gonna call on a vote for each number. Well, I'm gonna do roll call, I'm sorry, I'll do roll call. You tell me your first place, and I will award it two points. You will tell me your second place, and I will award it one point.
Correct.
That make sense?
Yep.
All right, so let me get my tally sheet, and then everybody else check math on this one. Okay, Ms. Reed?
Hold on, I have, I'm sorry, I have one question. Do we have to have a second choice? Because last time, we were, we picked, we get, we were given three selections, and then, you know, some people voted for just one person, period. So do we have to have a second choice, or on that? Does that make sense?
What's the feelings of the board?
Gerald, I think it, it hurts, I, I think on this round that I think it can make a difference in, in who ends up, who it is that ends up being selected if you don't do a second. You're certainly at your, it's your right to do, it's your right to do whatever you're comfortable with. But I, I think the first round, it wasn't as big, you know, it, I don't think it had as big, big an impact as it does this round.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Reed.
Okay, well, as you know, I will be voting first place for number fourteen. And second place for number eighteen.
Okay, Mr. Blunt?
Fourteen, eighteen?
Wait, that's too fast. Fourteen first place.
Yeah, and then.
Second place, okay, just joking. Ms. Chumlee?
Oh, this is really tough. So eighteen and eighteen first and twenty-one second.
Okay, eighteen, Ms. Chumlee gets two points and one point to number twenty-one. All right, Mr. Lopez?
It'll be twenty-one and eighteen.
Okay, twenty-one gets two points and eighteen, one point for Mr. Lopez. All right, Mr. Medina?
Yeah. So twenty-one will get first place, and then fourteen, two.
Fourteen gets one point. Okay. And Joseph Medina, two points for number twenty-one. All right, Ms. Freeman?
Um, yes. Twenty gets first place and eighteen, second. Okay, two points for number twenty, Ms. Freeman, and one point for number eighteen. All right, and then Carol Harrell, two points for number twenty and one point for number eighteen. So I'm doing the math, I have, it looks like five for number fourteen and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven points for number eighteen, four points for number twenty, and five points for number twenty-one. Anyone else have a, I know Ms. McGee was going to help me with the math. Anybody else get those same numbers, five for fourteen, or, or, I need, seven for eighteen, four for twenty, five for twenty-one? Now what?
Okay.
My job's with yours.
Okay, all right, so some suggestions are now up for grabs. We, we could have a simple majority, we could and, and, and leave it as is, if there's a motion for that. But we have a tie with fourteen and twenty-one. We could certainly eliminate number twenty, if that's the wishes. So what's the thinking of the board? What are some good suggestions or next steps?
If I could. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with just going with the top two.
Well, there's actually top three. Yeah, there's fourteen and twenty tied. I mean, I'm sorry, fourteen, I, I have to say it backwards. Number eighteen had the most votes, fourteen and twenty-one tied. So it was seven, five, and five.
So fourteen and twenty-one were tied, yes.
Yes, and number eighteen had seven.
I guess if we had to, if we were gonna move two forward, right, move two more candidates forward, do we want to do another vote for between fourteen and twenty-one?
Okay, that's a, that's a good suggestion.
Why don't we just take the top three?
I'm sorry?
What, what about if we just took the, if we did the top three?
Yep.
That would force two people to.
Yep.
What if we did the same, I'm sorry, Dr. Harrell, what if we did the same exercise with the top three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we only vote for one?
Right, and we only vote for one, right?
I was thinking we'd vote for two. I was thinking we'd vote for two with the top three.
We're not in a hurry either, right? I mean, we still got a couple of months, or, I mean.
We do, but we still have a middle school naming and a high school naming to get through.
Okay, okay.
I think, I think we're getting close. I think we're getting close. So we have a couple of suggestions. One suggestion is to flat-out revote for your top pick of fourteen, eighteen, or twenty-one. The other suggestion is use the same exercise where we awarded points, three, excuse me, two and one, two to our first place, one to our second place. Was there a third suggestion?
Just to vote for the number one?
Just vote for the number one. Okay. So I'm looking around, what are some, what's some?
The other thing would be just to break the tie between fourteen and twenty-one.
Yeah.
I, I kind of, you know, that, or do we just vote for the, for the top, just vote for one and then see where we are?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's, I, I don't know.
That was Katie's suggestion.
Eliminate number twenty and vote from, from the other three for the top one, one that you want.
Do you want to see how that plays out, and then if we want to go back to the point system, do that? Or just, we eliminate number twenty?
Go out and see what happens.
Well, I'd say let's just go with the, pick the top one, right? I mean, that's just, we're gonna go with, you know.
Okay, Mr. Medina, I'm looking.
And let's see where we, where we land. Yeah.
I agree with the top one.
Okay.
We have, out of this selection, we're gonna have fourteen, eighteen. Who are we?
Yep.
Fourteen, eighteen, and twenty-one, is that what you're saying?
That's what we're saying.
Okay.
Are we okay? Any opposition to that?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, let's do roll call on that. So no points this time, no higher level math. Yay. Okay, Ms. Reed, your number, please.
Fourteen.
Mr. Blunt?
Fourteen.
Ms. Chumlee? Eighteen. Mr. Lopez?
Twenty-one.
Mr. Medina?
Twenty-one.
Ms. Freeman?
Eighteen.
And Carol Harrell, eighteen.
So we're still saying.
So we do, well, we have, we have two, we have actually three, but two for number fourteen, three for eighteen, and two for twenty-one, so.
Eighteen came out on top twice, so I think you got a choice.
So it's a tie again for the number fourteen and twenty-one, but as, as Ms. Reed said, eighteen came out number one twice.
This one's tough because they're all, they're all good.
They are. They really are.
Did I say that my nominee was, had fifty years of service to the district?
Yeah, I think there, all three of them are approaching that in some shape or form, and have done so much.
Fourteen had forty-three, too, so forty-five taught teaching, so, yeah.
Well.
Dr. Harrell?
I'm listening.
Okay, um, I, I think the only way we get it down to two is if we each select, either we select two, or we obviously have to have a majority to, to name the school. So.
So why don't we leave number eighteen as, are we gonna try to, maybe we go back to the, well, I mean.
Okay, so, so real quick, Ms. Freeman, my understanding, and so the three WADA trustees can give feedback on this, that, but that a simple majority was fine for a school naming. You're saying a majority of the board, so.
We have a majority of the board for approval. So I wonder if we go back and I don't know if there's any going back. Maybe we just table this to the next, Dr. Woods?
Well, I was gonna say this real quick, if you, a motion, unless somebody abstains, you gotta have a majority. If you have a motion for an individual and do the process that way, more than likely, you'll get a majority.
We could try.
What do you, what, what, repeat that again? What are you saying by abstaining? Who's gonna abstain?
I don't know if anybody would or not, but if, if, if everybody.
Why would one?
For an individual, you're gonna get a majority somehow out of that.
Okay.
Maybe four, three, maybe five, two, six, one, seven, zero, whatever, but unless somebody abstains, you would get a majority.
If you end up with the second place person, right?
No, I just say you do one name. If somebody does a motion for a particular number, then you're gonna have a majority at some point.
So Bobby, help me with, what would that process look like?
I don't know if y'all want to do it, because, you know, it's, you know, we've had different ways we've done it in the past, but if somebody, for example, made a motion for number eighteen and we took the vote, let's see where we are now. You'd have a majority, it may be split, but you don't know which one would go. If that one doesn't go, you go for the next name.
Okay.
Well, we could, we could give it a try. I'm not sure tabling it's going to make, you know, two, three or four more weeks. I, I think we can get to it tonight, so. Bobby, do you want to make a motion? Karen, do you want to make a motion? I see you shaking your head. Or is there a motion? I see Melissa has her hand up, and Karen has her hand up.
Dr. Harrell, I, I will make a motion that we approve candidate number eighteen.
Okay, and we do not need a second, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. All right, any questions or discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing? Okay?
We're voting on number eighteen.
Say it one more time?
We're voting on number eighteen, right?
Yes.
And we either choose to either accept it or deny it, right?
Your name.
Yes, yeah, anyway, okay.
Okay, so I'll do a roll call vote.
Just double.
Okay, Ms. Reed?
Yeah, I, Katie, before you vote, so you know, I, I guess, let me, I just have a point of order, or a point of order? Yeah, that's a, a, a. Yeah, that's a, a, a question. I think it's a point of order. I can't remember in parliamentary procedure. So we vote, we're gonna do a, a yay or nay vote, right? On it?
By number eighteen.
Okay, so we're just gonna, it's pretty much, um, we just vote up and down, right? On that? Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, um, who, can you, Bobby, did you do the original motion? I want to make sure Ms., um, McGee has that. Who did the original motion? Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, can you repeat that original motion one more time?
A move that we named the elementary school after candidate number eighteen.
Okay. All right, I'm looking around. Okay, uh, Ms. Reed? What says you?
I guess I.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumlee? Ms. Chumlee?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Nay.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And, uh, Carol Harrell, aye. So the ayes have it at six, one. So, is that our namesake, everybody?
I guess so.
I think so. I think so.
I think so. That works. So I guess, Ms. Chumlee, you get to make the, um, ultimate phone call.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, um.
Y'all mind if I step off for just a minute and make that call?
Sure, um, since I'm still looking for my notes.
All right, I'll let you do that real quick.
I suggest we, I suggest we announce, uh, for the record, who the, not, who the, uh, namesake will be.
Okay, Ms. Chumlee, will you do the honors, please?
Um, the new elementary school we named after Joey Tomlinson, longtime ag teacher at Marshall Homes and O'Connor.
And your teacher?
And my teacher.
Teacher.
Yeah, he would always tell me. And Ms. Chumlee, if I may, do you, do you think maybe you could do that during the, during the break between this and executive session? That's a great idea. Karen, I was trying to look to try to figure.
That's what I'm trying to see too. So we are now moving to, um, TASB advocacy resolutions, right?
Yeah, what, what, that's, if y'all are all right with that, I'll just take a minute between, um, this and executive session.
Okay. All right, um. And again, phenomenal nominees, so we will make sure we revisit those names again. Um, so thank you, everyone, for going the extra mile to do the research and to present and, and, we will move on now to letter C, Texas Association of School Boards Advocacy Resolutions. Dr. Woods?
Yes, ma'am. Attached to the agenda are advocacy resolutions that we have modified from prior years. We reviewed these, uh, at committee, but much has changed, uh, since then. So we did go through the, and by we, I mean Naomi, uh, go through the advocacy resolutions and bring them, uh, up to date with regard to COVID, since we know that that will be a significant feature of the twenty-twenty-one legislative session. However, we did not delete resolutions that, that were not COVID-related, if that makes sense. We, we know that there is lots of work to be done in the public school space, e- even though some of it is not directly related to the disease or its financial impact. So, uh, so you will see resolutions in there that, that certainly are tied to our current situation, and then others that are not, but still feel appropriate. There is a timeline for, uh, this. I, I believe it's mid-June to get the, uh, done and approved by the board so that they can be considered in TASB's process.
Any questions or discussion? Uh, Ms. Freeman, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh, Dr. Woods, I have a couple of questions. Um, one, that's, various times we've talked about the importance of a local accountability system. While it's alluded to, I think, in some of the resolutions, I'm not sure that the, that those three words are used, in the fifteen or so resolutions that we have. Do you know if there was an intent at one of the resolutions to get at that?
Ms. Freeman, I, I frankly don't recall that. We could certainly create something along those lines, uh, that's explicit to that.
I mean, it, it might fit with a couple of the resolutions. I, I'm not looking at them specifically right now. If the board would allow that slight change to, or to modify one of the resolutions that, that talks about accountability.
We could certainly do that.
And then, um, another question regarding, we talk about the digital, we've talked about the digital divide for a very long time, and it's very noticeable since we've started, um, doing, um, virtual, um, we have virtual curriculum and, and children that, and students that need to, um, access the internet. Is there anything that you believe that our legislatures could do to help us with that? And if so, could we put that in here?
My take around, uh, digital divide work is that it will largely be led at the federal level because so much of the law that regulates that industry is federal. Uh, the other thing that's just frankly the case with the infrastructure needed to, uh, take care of the digital divide is it's gonna require, um, federal-sized resources, if that makes sense. Just because of the massive nature, uh, of, of that project, um, both in urban settings and in more rural settings. So, uh, that thought actually did float through my head, but that's, that was my logic behind not including it. That and also understanding what the state budget's likely to look like.
So, to that point, this might be an opportunity for us to, um, and I could certainly bring this up to TASB when they go forward with, um, the NSBA's Advocacy Institute after the first of the year. It might be something that we ask them, ask TASB to ensure that they go forward with that, and I could speak to that at the, at the board level.
Agreed. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. I still can't find my hand thing, so. The, uh, resolution that talks about appointed boards, uh, with the exception of the military installations, I don't remember us having that discussion. How many appointed boards do we have in the state of Texas?
Every charter organization.
Oh, that's what it is. Okay. See, I don't consider them public schools, but then, uh, it says the appointed boards disenfranchise taxpayers. Okay, I, do you think people will understand what we're talking about?
Uh, yes. I, I think folks who know this policy work will definitely understand it.
Okay. Got it. It's been a long time ago when we looked at these, I guess, and I just don't remember a lot of them.
And we've thought about a lot of other things in that period of time, yes.
Well, it's a, it's a big, long list, um, and good things to certainly consider for the future. So, uh, if nobody else has any questions, I would move that we approve this list.
Okay, so Ms. Reed, you are putting forth a motion. Is there a second?
Um, I will second, um, Dr. Harrell, and, um, I don't know if there needs to be a, a new motion, Dr. Harrell, but I would, I would like to include or change some wording in one of the resolutions that addresses, um, local account, the local accountability system.
Okay, can you say the verbiage and then we can revisit? What, what, how would you like it said or stated, or come back to it?
Well, I, okay, so, um, I would just like to, I would make a motion, there's already a motion on the floor. So an amendment to the motion to address the, a local accountability, the importance of a local accountability system in one of the resolutions that currently exists.
Okay, so an amendment to, um, Ms. Reed's motion to address the importance of a local accountability system. Does that capture it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Chumlee?
I was gonna ask, so, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little on, slow on the, the uptake here and getting this open. But I wanted to ask about, you know, the other thing that we had talked about, and I'm really glad to see, um, the piece about the transparency on, on the boards. But the other thing, remember that we had talked about and that we had, had heard, um, I, when we've met with some of our legislators, we've heard the discussion about, um, I'm thinking about the, the one charter school that was created that had great impact on like the traffic flow of, of a certain community and was really, I mean, it was really detrimental. And, and so one of the things we had talked about with our legislators was, um, more of a, of a requirement or a review on where these schools go. And that when we go back to what the original purpose was when we talked about charter schools, was that it was to help areas that were needing an additional assistance or options. And so, I'm not sure what the wording would be, but, you know, that, it, it doesn't seem to me that, that there's a lot of oversight by our legislature on when they approve the opening of a new charter school. And so, I, I was, and I don't know the wording, but, of what it would be, but Brian, you know what I'm trying to say on this? To help articulate it is.
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, basically what you're suggesting is that the review process be changed, um, and you'd have to change a fair amount of law, cause, uh, the, the existing process is that for a brand-new organization, state board reviews, but for any expansion amendment that happens after that, it goes only through the commissioner's office. So, the other thing I think you're saying is that there ought to be some kind of local element to the review process, and again, that, that would require pretty significant change in statute.
Or even just the, the piece, Brian, would, you know, just, there, it just doesn't seem to me that there's much, there is any requirement in relation to review. It just seems like if you decide you want to do one and you want to put it anywhere, that, that that's, I, I don't know, there just doesn't seem to me to be much, in, much review of the impact of a, of another school going into a specific area and, and looking at who, you know, what students would be the students that, that they would be able to, you know, to help or serve. I, I don't know, I just, I, I just think that review process needs to be tighter, and there needs to be other elements or requirements in it.
So, so to Melissa, um, to Ms. Chumlee's point, could it, we possibly look at a resolution, um, that attends to that for the June board meeting, um, so that, um, that where we are right now with charters and, and the charter application process and all of that can be shared, um, and also the money that's following that, um, in the state and the federal government, I think begs for, you know, some in-depth, maybe at an academics meeting.
I, that would be a good, well, I just, you know, cause I'll, I was thinking about an example of, you know, I remember, you know, being board, when I was board president, that we'd get this letter, and the letter would just say, so-and-so has, you know, applied to, you know, to put a school in here. But there really wasn't any way, no one was asking what kind of impact that's gonna have on the community, what kind of impact that's gonna have, you know, on the school district. I mean, there was no, like, and, cause I'm thinking not just from a school district perspective, I'm thinking about that one school that I think it was Marissa Perez had told us about, where it caused a huge traffic situation, you know, that was dangerous for kids because nobody had asked them about it. And that wasn't part of, of that initial review. So I'm just thinking that, you know, there, it needs to be more than just a letter to those affected saying, hey, we're gonna, you know, they're gonna open a school here. And that's the piece. Now, if we don't, if it's something that really has no, you know, there's no likelihood of there ever being any change to it because there's too many things that would have to be changed for it. I, I don't know, even if it just opens up the conversation to people looking at that, I, I just thought that that was interesting, that they really didn't seem, nobody knew anything about it when it caused all those problems for that, that one location.
That, that conversation is ongoing. TASB's, uh, signed on to a very large group that's advocating for reform in that area. So that, that is already in process.
Could, would, would it help if we had a resolution that, that spoke to that too?
Uh, TASB and TASSA and a bunch of other groups have already signed on to documents that asked for that very thing, so I'm not sure. Unless it just makes y'all feel better about it, that it's gonna have much of an impact, because it's, the ball's already been kicked off on that.
Oh, then, then we don't have to. Thanks for sharing that, Brian. I just, I, I just remembered we'd had, that was part of the conversations we'd had with our legislators that just kind of stuck with me, that, that discussion. So, um, no, we're good. I, I really like the resolutions. I think they've got a lot of meat to them.
Yep.
Okey-dokey. So, uh, we have a motion and amendment to the motion. Is there any more questions or discussion? All right, so y'all help me out, because this is a first for me. Do we take, um, do we get a second on the amendment to the motion, or, um, a second on the original motion?
Yeah, I have, I have a suggestion. You could do that process, then it would be fine. That, or you could ask Katie if she may take a friendly amendment.
Since the, the original mo, emotion has not been seconded, I can just, uh, accept the amendment as presented to the motion.
And I'm gonna use that word, a friendly, um, amendment to the motion. So thank you for that. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Chumlee, there's a second. Um, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion, or the, now, the motion to address the importance of a local accountability system, um, respond by saying a yay or nay to the roll call vote. Let me find, okay, Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Yay.
Ms. Chumlee?
Yes, yay.
Lopez?
Yay.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, yes. All right, the ayes have it. We now have a resolution with, um, the amendment, um, attached to it. So thank you for that. Um, we are.
Dr. Harrell, before we go forward, uh, just as clarification to the board, so what happens with these resolutions? They go forward to, um, they go directly to the TASB board. They get called by, they, they get reviewed by staff first, and so picture, you know, there's a, there's over a thousand school districts in the state of Texas that could potentially submit resolutions. So some of these resolutions may be combined with other resolutions, and we will, um, TASB will come back to usually the board president and Dr. Woods, and then the, the TASB director, if, assuming I'm still the TASB director, and we'll talk about whether we, it, it's okay with us if we would like to combine with other resolutions. So there's still gonna be some jockeying, if you will, of some of these, um, uh, slots or the, these resolutions, um, as they go forward to the, in the advocacy agenda, and then we'll see them, um, hopefully, eventually in the, um, delegate assembly at the TASSA-TASB convention.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item D, reorganization of board officers. I guess, do I start with, um, so I never paid attention before, so I am now very much paying attention. Do we call? Do we call for, do I call for nominations from the trustees?
Dr. Harrell?
Come in.
Doc, Dr. Harrell?
Ms. Chumley.
Okay. Number one, I, I think that you have done a, a really good job in a, in a tough environment. And I'm, I'm in awe of your technology use with all of this. And so I, I actually would like to move that we retain the same set of officers that we have in place for another year.
Well, thank you for saying that. But look who I get to work with, so.
Let me add too, Karen and, and Joseph as well. I just, I think, I think you've done a really good job and this has been a really tough time. And so that's the motion that I would like to make instead of us opening nominations is that I, I move that we retain the same board as last year for the next school year, 2021.
And I second the motion.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Medina? To continue on in your respective positions? Ms. Freeman?
Dr. Harrell, I, I appreciate the, the vote of confidence. Or the, at least the motion and the second from the, the opportunity to be able to do this. Let me start all over again. I appreciate the opportunity to continue to be vice president. And you are doing a great job, Carol.
Well, it takes a team and you guys know that. And I think it's, it's been wonderful to be able to serve in this capacity. I think it kind of goes with the theme of the night of service and taking my turn of that has been a real honor, but also I don't take it lightly as I sit and look in awe of the years of service. And one thing, Ms. Reed, I forgot to add that they gave me a 30 placard, but they also gave me a 35. So I think that was a hint that another term would be, you know, advisable. But anyway, and thank you for that, Ms. Freeman, too. Mr. Medina, are you okay with?
Yeah, likewise, I, I just, we'll piggyback with Ms. Freeman as well, you know, I'm grateful for the vote of confidence and the second as well. And we'll also be grateful to continue this role.
Okay, so Ms. Chumley had the motion and Mr. Lopez seconded. Any other discussion before we take a vote? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
You know.
Oh, did that aye?
Uh huh. Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. All right, the ayes have it. So we have. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. Okay, so we'll go down here. We need to have an election of a delegate and alternate to the 2020 Texas Association of School Boards Delegate, Delegate Assembly. And trying to see who.
I was the delegate last time.
Katie Reed and Gerald Lopez were last time. Do I have nominees and an alternate? Or would you like to?
Who have never done it?
May I make a suggestion?
All right, so Ms. Reed says, can someone do it who hasn't done it before? That's one idea. Ms. Freeman?
Yeah, if, if I may make a suggestion, Gerald is, was selected in Region 20 to go forward as a lack representative. And there will be a, a lack meeting coming up. They missed the, the, the first one was, was canceled because of our COVID situation. The second one is normally scheduled at SLI, but it will be done, as I understand, Gerald, you, I know that you've received information on this, it'll be done as a virtual meeting. So since he's participating in all of this, I would suggest if he would like to, that he would be the, the delegate or the first delegate.
Okay, so you are moving to nominate Mr. Lopez. Is there a second?
I would second that, but I have a question. Is the, that right now it is still considered that we are going to have the assembly in Dallas? Is that correct?
Dr. Woods?
That's, there hasn't been an announcement to the contrary. There is quite a bit of exploration to the contrary.
So we'll be prepared for either or, I guess.
Yes, ma'am. And I, it's hard to imagine the number of people that conference attracts in, in that space, but both organizations are working on that now.
If I may, this is, this would be the year that that our Northside students would be on the stage. Because Dr. Woods.
Oh, that, that's right. Brian?
Yep, that's correct. So we're working on a, a virtual presentation. James and his people are working on that now in case we need to employ them. And it will come a time not too long from now where we'll both organizations and, and Northside with regard to that presentation will have to make a decision.
Wow.
Another interesting decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, it's just keep coming.
You made a motion to nominate Gerald Lopez and Katie, you seconded.
Gerald said he was willing to do that.
He said yes. I read his lips.
Gerald, congratulations on the lack. I didn't realize that. That's great. Yay.
All right, we'll do a real quick.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Carol. It has both in there. Who's going to be the alternate?
Thank you for that. Doesn't sound like we.
Yes, every year we have people jumping on, jumping to do this. Who likes the virtual meetings?
Well, I don't, I don't mind, but I don't know, I've never been an alternate or a delegate, so I don't know if I can nominate myself.
Well, do it. Do it, do it. Yeah, that's great. You'd be great, Carol. I, I would nominate you.
Okay. And then we need, do we, do we need a second on, well, let's take a vote. Let's, let's start over again. So the, the motion, one, the, the original motion was for Gerald, but I moved too quickly on that. So is it okay to go back to a motion that includes Gerald as the delegate and Carol as the alternate, alternate? And I take a vote.
Who moved?
Okay, who moved? Melissa?
No, I was saying, who made, who made the motion?
Originally was Ms., Ms. Freeman and then Ms. Reed seconded Gerald. So.
Is Karen just, just, you know, change.
Can you do a friendly?
To add Carol. And then Katie would.
And I'll add Carol. Oh, is my second.
Ms. Freeman?
Yes, yes. I, I would add a friendly amendment to my motion.
And Ms. Reed?
Yes, please.
All right, we'll take a vote now. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Yes, Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina? Mr. Medina?
Are you there?
Aye. I was unmuted, sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. All right, so it's Gerald, delegate, Carol, alternate. Okay, representative to NSBA this past year was Melissa Chumley. Is there a nomination?
Okay, are, are we jumping through a few? Did I miss?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I was looking at this other list that had names on it. We are. The Northside Education Foundation. This year it was Katie Reed. Thank you, Ms. Chumley. Election of Board Representative to Northside Education Foundation.
Katie, were you wanting to do that again?
I don't, it's up to you all. I don't, I have no huge desire.
Because if, if not, I would, I would like to do it. It's been a long time since I, since I.
We've already selected the, we've already selected the pillars for this year. And the, they haven't been, anyhow, the list has been compiled, but it hasn't been announced. And plans are underway for the hopeful kind of celebration next fall. But there, I think they're going to have a virtual retreat this summer, so.
Oh, that, that'd be great. I would, I would like to do it if, if y'all, if there isn't anyone else that, that's interested.
Okay, Ms. Reed, did you want to make a nomination?
Here, I'll nominate Melissa for the position of, on the Northside Education Foundation Board.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Wait, aye?
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. All right, so now letter G, election of Northside Representative to Tasby Board of Directors. This past year and years past, it's been Ms. Freeman, Karen Freeman.
Carol, I move that we elect Karen Freeman as the representative of Tasby Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay, Melissa Chumley's nominated Karen Freeman and Gerald Lopez did a second. Any questions or any other nominees? Okay, we'll take a vote. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Chumley?
Sorry, aye?
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
And Carol Harrell, aye. Yay, congratulations. All right, election of Board Representative Bear County School Board Coalition. Any nominations?
This is the one that Bobby chairs, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So do, we get another person on there besides you?
Well, you know, I know we've had this on there, but to be honest, it's, it's open to all trustees.
That's what I was gonna say. I thought that.
Started, yeah. That was historically, because when it started, when they started, under UTSA and some other thing, it was, it was presidents, but since then it's really been, everybody.
And I think you said that last year, and so we, we didn't have a name in that position.
It's Gerald, right?
I don't have a name from last year, so. All right, so we'll just move right along. I don't think we need a vote on that.
We, we could just put Bobby in there because he's going to be there anyway. So if we want to contact somebody from our district, from Northside about the coalition, it's Bobby.
Okay, so do you want to go ahead and make a motion then?
Sure. I would move that Bobby Blunt is our board representative to the Bear County School Board Coalition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Freeman did a second. All right, all those in favor. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Blunt?
Aye.
Ms. Chumley?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Carol Harrell, aye. And the ayes have it. Congratulations, Bobby.
Keep up the good work.
Yay. So I think on board committees, you can do, like you did last year, email me ones that you prefer, number one and number two. This year, academics was chaired by Karen Freeman and had Melissa and Bobby on it. Finance was chaired by Gerald Lopez and had Joseph and Karen on it. Technology was chaired by Bobby Blunt and had Karen and Joseph. And building was chaired by Melissa Chumley and had Karen and Katie. And so thank you to the chairs and the participants. I also have policy and intergovernmental, I'm sorry, I, I cut off, was chaired by Katie Reed. And participants are members Karen and Joseph. So thank you for that. I do think that those are kind of another way that you provide such incredible service and time. So if, if you want to continue or if you want to choose a different one to, to learn and grow on or to lead on, let me know and I'll form those with your permission, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, so I'm looking around. That was up for discussion. And then future agenda items. Dr. Woods?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harrell. As you can see, we're holding two meetings for the month of June. We do plan to have a called meeting on the 16th of June that would largely be a budget work session. And then come back in July, and I'm, I'm sorry, in late June, the, the following week actually. And perhaps take some action with regard to budgetary items. We're, we're approaching the timeline where even though there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty, we've got to make some decisions with regard to the, the next fiscal year. So likely going to bring that to you for initial conversation on that meeting on the 16th.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Any other items?
Oh, Dr. Harrell?
Sure.
So Brian, and so on, on the, the matter of the task force with all the different, I'm sorry, when, when will that? When will we hear on that? I mean, what's kind of, what's kind of your timeline in relation to the board's inclusion on that?
Initial report comes to senior staff next week. There'll likely be some additional work that'll have to be done, so I would guess as early as late June, perhaps July before we're ready to lay some of that out. Also got to wait on TEA guidance, of course, which we don't have either.
Right, because I'm, you know, Brian, I'll just share with you what all of us in, in different venues and are, are getting questions. And so we're, you know, certainly saying that we're still, we're working on it. I mean, there's so many moving parts to this. I would just really, I'm, I'm, would be concerned about us getting to the point where now suddenly we have to move and, and move forward with something without the board having, you know, been included in, at least just, because I, I, like, I, I enjoyed, I, I liked that you gave us a list of some of the questions. And then I had an opportunity to speak with Dr. Jordan about kind of the, the makeup of the committee, a makeup of the task force and what individual roles and, you know, different individuals would be working on. And so even if it's just, you know, a high-level 30,000-foot kind of review, if, when it gets to senior staff, if you could just give us that, that first blush of what you're looking at. And so somewhere on the, I, I just, Brian, what I don't want to do is get us at the very end and now it's something like we, you really need us to approve and support moving into something. And, and there's questions that have come up. I just don't want us to, to be caught in that situation.
Yeah, I, certainly whatever documents get created in this process, we'll certainly share with the board, you know, as a part of the weekly updates. And then we'll see what, how we could structure some kind of discussion at some point a little further along. I just, what I want to keep emphasizing is that we're not going to be in a situation where we're going to be able to say, this is exactly what it's going to look like on August the 25th. we're not going to be in a situation where we're going to be able to say this is exactly what it's going to look like on August the 24th. Because there's just so many variables that we're not going to be able to control between now and then. So as long as folks are comfortable with lots of options, because that's what this is going to look like, then we can certainly have that conversation.
Well, I think what will be a benefit of it, Brian, is that there's lots of rumors and, you know, concerns and just statements that we've heard as a board, you know, during board meetings actually even, where it'll be nice to say, no, you know what, that's, that's not on, that's, that's not something being considered. So, you know, just that we have as much knowledge as we can to help us on that. That'd be appreciated.
Good.
I agree. Lots of scenarios too. Any other questions or suggestions? Okay, so we will now move, it is 8:34 and we are going to move into executive session and I'm trying to find the verbiage to that.
And I'm going to step out and call Joey and I'll be right back.
Right, okay. You know, juggling paper and technology is a real challenge. It's still 8:34. And I'm looking for the verbiage. But we'll just go ahead and move into executive session at 8:34.
Carol, the only thing is, I think I think you got to say is on the bottom is to say for the reason, the code we're using. It's, where's that?
I have it. Statement, okay, the Board of Trustees on May 26th, Texas Governmental Code, Section 551.072 and 551.074, discussion will take place on the following items. A, sites, B, appointment of Assistant Superintendent for High School Instruction, C, appointment of Director of Personnel, People Personnel, D, appointment of Academic Dean of Peace, E, appointment of Assistant Principal Jones, F, appointment of Vice Principal at Cable Elementary, G, appointment of Vice Principal at Oak Hills Terrace, and H, appointment of Vice Principal at Wernley Elementary School. All right, thank you, Mr. Blunt, too.
We have to close this down and go into the other.
Okay, we just see Joe's Gerald. Make sure Gerald's okay. Oh, there he is. Yay. All right, we're here. The Board of Trustees on May 26, 2020, beginning at, oh. Does, hang on. 9:12 PM. Will convene an open meeting. Action will take place on the following appointments. Here's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 appointments as discussed. And then also the election of a representative to the NSBA. So we'll do the appointments first. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the appointments A through G as recommended in closed session.
Second.
And Mr. Medina, second. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Ms. Chumbly?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Freeman?
Aye.
Ms. Reed, I mean, Ms. Harrell, aye. The ayes have it. Just love saying that name. All right. The appointments have been approved. Oh, Mr. Blunt, Mr. Blunt, what is your friendly vote?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so the ayes have it. Thank you. You can tell I already packed up my, my roll call. All right, and then also, is there someone who would like to be the representative of the NSBA? I think, Melissa, you did it last year, right?
I, Carol, and really, you know, I didn't go to the, to the actual conference and they do send you information though, but.
And who knows that there's going to be a conference this year, because isn't it like in January or February? It's like really cold time. I remember freezing.
In February. I think, I think actually NSBA is in the spring.
Yeah, April, I think.
I just remember it snowed and I froze.
The Advocacy Institute you might be thinking of in DC is in February, January, February.
Okay, that's what it was. So who, who would like to?
Nobody.
Well, how about, if we just, if we, can we just leave that open until we get closer to, to the?
To see what happens?
Yeah, the conference, to see what happens, because if it's something that it's virtual, then that might be something that we can facilitate easier. Or, you know, as we get closer, if, if it looks like someone has the flexibility to be able to attend the actual conference.
Is there, wasn't there some literature though? Isn't there some good communication that comes when you're the delegate or does that go to everybody?
No, you're right. That does, you do get, though, I don't know, I didn't get, I didn't get much this, this time around. In the past, I've gotten it before, but I didn't get much this time. And because we are members, everybody should be getting the same thing.
Okay.
You might check with, maybe Linda could update email addresses. I'm not sure which ones they have, but I do receive pieces from the NSBA. Yes, I, yes, I do. So maybe we need to check the email addresses.
I have updated that, actually.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, since there's no names coming forward, we'll delay that. And any other discussion, anything else before we end our open meeting?
No, great meeting.
Congratulations to everybody. Stay safe and healthy. The board ends its meeting at 9:16.
Y'all take care.
Good night.